Good evening. Good evening. This is the January two thousand twenty-two meeting of the zoning board of appeals. And I just want to welcome everybody. Run through our members that were all here, please. Meg Yergin, you're here.
Here.
But Greta, you're here?
Yes.
Okay, Robin, Robin Kramer. Okay, I'm Dave Newfeld. I'm here and Brian Glassdine is recuperating from some procedure things, so he will not be here this evening. Um, also, we have Brittany O'Neil and I don't know if someone here from the building department?
Dennis is not here at the moment.
Dennis is not here and Charlie Gottlieb. Charles is our counsel and he is here. Believe we covered everybody on that. Okay, just very quickly, the procedure that we follow tonight, for those of you attending the meeting, is that we will be doing public hearings on some applications. At which point, if you're the applicant, you'll present your position to the board. At that point, respond to questions from the board, not to others. If you're here on a matter that's been adjourned, please understand the board will have been at the meeting. It's not. They will have listened to the meeting and seen the paperwork. So don't repeat everything because that makes it unfair to others because, you know, just cut off other people because it will be too late. And the board has your submissions. Public can comment on these after the applicant speaks. The board may ask questions and then, members of the public, please speak up and you can ask questions of the board. Do not ask questions of the applicant. We can then ask them if they're appropriate. I want to make it clear, no deliberations on any application are made during the hearing. At the end of the hearing, either when it's closed or if it's adjourned, but when the hearing is finally closed, which can be the same day or it can be another day. After that, the board will deliberate. It will not usually deliberate the same day, but usually the following month. I would say the matters on this evening that are public hearings that are closed will probably be dealt with and decided next month. When we are deliberating, please bear in mind, you can't comment. It's not allowed. You're not allowed to. Basically, everything has been presented and then the board will deliberate on those matters. Okay? But let me begin by pointing out there's one member not here tonight and that's Brian Glassdine. It's been the practice of the board historically that if some, since you need three votes to gain an apple, to win or to gain a resolution, three of the five members, even if there's only four people or three people here, you still need three. So we do afford the people the right to request and we usually grant a request in adjournment if you want to have the full board here because we don't have the full board here. I will say that for new matters coming on tonight, I expect Mr. Glassdine will be here at the next meeting in February and will have had an opportunity to, instead of watching something good on television, he will get to watch this. And he will watch this at his house where have you. Is there anybody here who wants to avail themselves of a request for an adjournment? If not, we will continue. Change your mind, we'll deal with it later on. Okay, we're going to start with the continued public hearings. And again, I would just ask this, please, to try to avoid. I know it's difficult sometimes, but just try to avoid repeating the board heard it. Usually if they're adjourned, they've been adjourned for a particular reason and we don't want to really go over it all again. It'll lose itself on that. Now, the first matter on this evening is, excuse me, just very difficult working remotely. It's the five twenty-four, five thirty-two and four forty-two Waverly Avenue application. This is an application for variances and for an area variance for the use of storage equipment outside. We had this matter on, just notes last time. We received materials. One of the questions that came up last time was whether it's an area variance or use variance and the applicant addressed that. The board at that point decided that it would deal with that during deliberations after the hearing is closed. If it's an area variance, it would proceed then to consider it because that's what the applicant applied for. If for some reason the board decided, no, it needs a use variance, that's a different standard. And then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back and make that application. The applicant also was, had undertaken a last meeting to provide certain materials, certain dimensions and details, and we did receive those from the applicant. I believe we received a memo and spec specifications of the items that are to be stored. We see you received that. It was filed December twenty-eighth. And we received a, I guess what they call a site plan of really more of a location of where things are on the site. Okay? The applicant here? Okay. The applicant is here?
Yep.
Can we let the applicant in or?
I just promoted him.
That's very good of you. Hello applicant. One thing, um, whoa, we're waiting for that.
Okay, I am here. Can you hear me?
I can. I can see you as well, Mr. How are you?
Hi, Happy New Year.
To you as well.
I think, I hope with also on Joe Hill and maybe TJ Milo if I don't know if Brittany can see them.
Thomas, Thomas Milo, yes.
Yes, he's one of ours and there's a
I have a couple with no, the name is not clear.
Well, Joe Hill, is it a two oh three area code? Is it saying?
No, nothing like that.
Okay, well, they should raise their hand if they're on this. There's TJ. So, um, if I may speak or?
Please, by all means.
Okay, so to, you know, following your admonition, uh, we have nothing to, to add to the application. We've, as you know, this is our third visit. We provided, you know, we've addressed the, the area use variance issue with the, via the submission that the, you accepted at the last meeting. And then we presented a further information on, on the specifications of the potential equipment that would be stored if granted. And we have slightly amended to the pre-existing site plan. It's on, but we did locate the potential for the, of course, that would be subject to the village. So we have nothing new to present other than what we've already presented. So we don't have anything to add to the application.
Okay, um, I just had one question. I saw, there was a question that came up the last time. Forgive me, I'm looking at another screen. That's why I'm trying to not being rude by looking away from you, Paul. But there was something about the, I'm just, just give me one moment to just expand it. On the, where the trucks are, delivery trucks and where the machines are, they have the, they've laid them out on the site. Right? That's the one you gave us. Yeah, but there's no dimensions on it. And those trucks, particularly the first two trucks look like that would be some, some event to try to squeeze in there. And I'm just trying to understand if we could get that. The big question was how, you know, what size are those things?
On the submission, it's the, the size of the trucks that you're talking about the trucks that'll be bringing the generators in and out?
It says delivery trucks, TYPI, some typical on this. There's one, there's five of them, I believe.
All right, the, the size of the truck is a Ford F-250 or it's called a rollback truck, which is a small flatbed truck commonly used by towing company. And that's on, uh, that's part of the, the December thirteenth letter from Sunbelt addressing the size of the trucks that did come up the last meeting.
Right. Oh, the, the size was mentioned down there?
Yes, yes. It's, it's, it's in the cover. It's on the first page of the letter from Sunbelt and then attached that letter all the specification. So it's a small, it's a small flatbed truck that we bring in a minute.
But what is the size of the spaces for those trucks? See, if you look at the site plan that's been presented, the trucks seem to be, at least the first two trucks seem literally to be abutting each other.
I have to defer to TJ, Thomas Milo on that. Can you unmute TJ and Thomas on?
And I'm looking at the letter, Mr. Noto. It mentions the type of truck. It doesn't mention the size.
Hello?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Hey, sir. How you doing? So could you repeat the question you were kind of?
Yeah, very simple question. Um, that you have the trucks there specified on this new site, like a layout of the plan. I don't think it's a site plan, but it's whatever it is. And there are five of them. Two of them are larger, three of them are smaller. I was just trying to get the dimensions of both the parking space and the trucks. Since those trucks seem to be, that seemed to be some event to back those in. I'm just.
Most of it, I mean, the trucks really are, are the size of, of either a large pickup truck or, or maybe a tow truck that, you know, that will be commonly found from a tow company. Those are the general sizes of the trucks. But they're not, you know, you know, they're not eighteen wheelers or, or, or anything like that.
No, a Ford F-250 is two hundred and thirty-two inches long versus eighty inches wide, seventy-eight inches high. So that'll give you a sense of what a Ford F-250 truck is. It's, it has a towing capacity. I mean, so that's, does it help you? That's the spec. It's not even that expensive. It's only thirty-six thousand dollars.
David, the site plan that I'm looking at has all the trucks the same size. Is there a later site plan that has different?
I believe so, yeah.
I don't see it.
I pulled it off the system right now.
Yeah, I'm looking at the system now. That's what I just looked at. I just opened.
We gave you a, a plan that stated twelve thirteen twenty-one, which had, you know, very few. Robert, it wouldn't be much different than the one you have. What we really did was, was located the trash containment area.
Twelve thirteen twenty-one, Robin.
Mine doesn't seem to have a date, so maybe it's the old one.
Yeah, it is on the bottom.
You look to the bottom where it says site plan revisions down, that's where the date is.
Yeah, I know where the dates are, but
Robin, if you take a look.
It does not have a date.
Okay, I go to the agenda and then I punch in and it gives me a list of everything in the file and I took the latest, the two items for December twenty-eighth, I believe, were uploaded.
That's interesting. That's not how it, how it shows up on mine. So it's very interesting. I don't have that.
A computer we use.
I'll go back, I'll go back to it.
While you're taking a look at that, does anyone, and then take a look and I'll get, we can find that. Does anyone have any, any board member have any questions with regard to this?
Paul, I'm sorry. Can I just ask, is Dominic related to this project?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you. Let me promote him.
If you could let him in, he's there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Robin, on the, um, if it's, I go, what I do, Robin, is I go to the agenda.
Yep, I'm on the agenda.
And then I, the last two items are Waverly side plan, Sunbelt layout.
Yeah, those are the two updated items.
Right. You see the very bottom one? That's the last item.
Yeah, but when I go there, the agenda that I downloaded yesterday or the day before, I downloaded the entire agenda yesterday or the day before from, and they're not there.
Oh, no, it's not. It doesn't. Yeah, you'd have to go to the individualized. It'll, that'll be mixed in. Let me see if I could send you the link.
Yeah. Well, Robin, if you just go to the Village of Amerenek and you go to our agenda on
That's where I went. I did. I downloaded it yesterday.
Why not? Download? I don't know. It's there now. I mean, I don't know because that's
Yeah, you don't have to download it. If you just go to the first little, it looks like a bunch of white pages rather than download the PDF, it'll break it out for you.
I'll try. Let's try that.
I could send you the link if I get there fast.
Well, let me go to the, back to the village. I'm on the village.
Yeah.
Yeah, go there boards. I, I just, you can go to the boards and that'll
That's where I am.
They divide up the agendas and the pre-some day.
No, no, I know. That's not the, I'm just telling you as I downloaded yesterday or the day before.
So rather than the item that looks like a PDF, there's before that, there's little white pages. If you click that one and then click the address. Yep. That's the one that
I don't know what you guys are looking at, but when I click on it, I get two choices, online, which gives you the
Yes, you go to online. You go to online.
Okay.
Now click the address that you're looking at and it'll break out all the items.
There you go.
All right, let's go see if it shows up there.
And it should be the last two items.
Okay. Yeah, but it's not on the download one, which is a problem.
Well, if you open.
Yeah, it isn't. There's only one site plan on that one. Just it's a problem if somebody downloads it. So just
If you just check, just wanted you just click that and see if
No, no, I have, I have it now, David, from that, but that's not what my, the second thing I'm saying, which is if you download the agenda, you don't get all those documents.
I understand. You said that right. I understand.
Downloaded the agenda. It's a problem. Um, so I just let you know, let
Gotcha.
Should know that.
Brittany, you're now on notice of that.
Got it.
Okay, perfect. I see it. Yep.
Does anyone else have any questions regarding this? No, does anyone from the public, any, anyone here or attending that wants to add anything or have any questions, comments regarding this? That being the case, and the applicant has
I do. I have a question. I'm sorry. And you might have answered this the first time, Mr. Noto, and I just don't remember. In fact, you probably did, and I apologize if I don't remember the answer. It has to do with exhaust. So the trucks unload and then they park, right? They don't, they don't stay They're no, okay. And with respect to the equipment itself, they drop the equipment off, the equipment is parked, if you will call it, and then it sits there on, not on, just sitting there until the truck, that truck or another truck comes and picks it up and drives away. So the only time there will be anything from the, anything emitted from this property is when you, when the truck is driving, unloading and loading, correct? There's no other occasion for emissions of any kind.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, these, these, these things will not be used on site. These are, these will be taken offsite and used elsewhere.
No, no, I understood that. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't somehow something else that was happening. There's no leftover. It doesn't then process every, anything.
Understood.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions? Okay, if not, is there an application to close?
I move to close.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, let's take a vote on that, Meg?
Yes, I say yes.
Yes.
Okay, Robin?
Yep.
And I'll vote to that. So the hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. Could you get my phone, please?
Is that TJ talking?
Okay, then next. The next matter on this evening is twelve fifty-eight East Boston Post Road. That's a continuation of the hearing regarding Toyota. At the last meeting, the applicant was going to, a few items came up. One of the issues was the applicant was going to get us additional information regarding certain configurations. And also the issue I believe came up concerning special permits that exist now. We did receive some information on that. And I must say, I miss being present at a meeting, finding it to be much more complicated moving papers around here. I don't know why. It should be easier. It doesn't seem to be. Is the applicant here?
I am here, Mr. Newfeld.
Oh, good, good. Okay.
For the record, Leo, here on behalf of the applicant.
Right. Now, I believe we did receive, did we not, that there are permits at this time, correct? Permits in existence.
There are special permits for the other two Toyota lots that are not part of this application, but yes, we did provide the, the background.
And I think one of the issues that came up was whether or not you'd have to amend, because we don't usually do separate permits for different aspects of the same application.
Well, so those two lots have their own individual permits and as set forth in our letter, for a variety of reasons, the applicant would prefer to keep this property separate as well.
What were the reasons for that? Just for the record, so you could explain that?
There's separate building lots, tax lots, and while they are currently under common ownership, in the future, they may not be. So i- in order to avoid a severance of the uses and permits and needing to come back in, uh, if one of the properties was sold off or transferred, they prefer to be treated individually and have their standalone approvals. And I think we have a site, we need all the special permit requirements for the, the site as a standalone auto sales use.
So that would make this, so this does not rely upon or interchange with any other portion of the operation of Toyota there? Because I'm confused on that. See, on one hand, I understand what you're saying. It's standalone. And on the other hand, I think much of the presentation was how they interrelate.
The current operation, while they're in common ownership and under common control, inevitably I'm sure there will be some interplay between the three. But just like when thirteen oh five was approved by the board that had its own standalone special permit when thirteen twelve received its special permit, there was no kind of global special permit that was issued. And so this, this site has its own standalone buildings, its own curb cut, its own parking requirements, screening requirements, et cetera.
And this is, if I'm correct, is this not for the sale of used vehicles?
It will be both used and new. Or new and used, however you'd like to describe it. It'll, it'll have a showroom on it. I mean, there'll be
And the showroom, well, I would imagine you can have a showroom for used as well as for new. But this will be for, for both. In other words, the showroom would be for both?
Typically, you'd be, the, the new cars are kept inside the showroom. So it'll be a, you know, following standard procedure. There's usually new cars inside. These cars are out on the lot.
Okay, because I noticed on the plan you submitted to us, it's called the new car sales office. Right?
Yes, uh, building you're saying?
That, that's, well, yeah, but it's part of your special permit application. Right. It covers that property.
I don't believe that that was intended to say for new car sales. It's a new building for car sales.
Well, it says the words exactly. So we're not confusing each other. It's new car sales office, Toyota City. That is the, I'm reading it.
Not sure what I proposed building and I have car sales office. My screenshot.
You have the proposed plan, that's a proposed layout plan dated, um, one second, I have to just enlarge this on the screen. It's dated, oh, is it? Oh, it's July thirty-one. Oh, it's in, I thought this just came, this is just, just, just logged on. This was just put on. But it's, it's the one on the application. It's the one that was sent over would be, it was one that was sent over with a letter of December twenty-three two thousand twenty-one from you. Which you sent to the board. Am I correct on that?
I am looking at that plan.
Okay, so that plan attached to it, at least the one uploaded, has on the top left
Yes, okay, in the title block. I apologize. I, I can, it, it's not just going to be office space that we previously submitted a floor plan that shows the interior layout of the building, restroom, office area and showroom space.
Now, across the street, you sell new, new cars as well, correct?
Yes.
Toyota.
Yes.
Number, is it handled differently if somebody buys it on this side? Is it an east-west concept or is it all the same?
They're generally treated, they're all under common ownership. So yes, I mean, the, the properties are, are all used by Toyota City.
So what would, would there be a problem with amending, treating this as an amendment or supplemental effect of the other?
The issue there is, I, I, I don't believe there's a necessity to join the three. And then if there were a sale of one of those lots at a separate point in time, arguably would upset the approval on this lot and would then trigger a requirement to bring this lot back in front of the board to amend its approval again. And I don't believe there's any necessity to, to have all three combined.
Dave, I have a question.
Please, Meg.
Will the sales be finalized in this, in the lot that's under our review right now? Or will all the sales be finalized across the street?
There is a sales office proposed in the building here.
I understand, but when I've gone to purchase a car, lease a car, I, I often talk to somebody at one desk and we talk about the different options and we even negotiate a price. And then I'm often led to another building where we go into the financing and all the papers that I have to sign are printed out. So they're not always done in the same location. So I, I feel that, you know, is that the way it's going to be set up? Do you have in this sales office the ability to complete the entire transaction, including the financing and all the other commitments that need to be signed in on this lot that's under your question? Or is there some use of the space across the street to, to complete the sales transaction?
The building is designed to have the capability to complete a sales transaction here. In, in practice, I don't know, you know, I don't think anyone has thought that far down the road as to how that will work logistically, but certainly there is office space here. The sales associates are usually on the floor. They, they may have a desk in the sales space. There was a separate office space that's designated in this building, which could be for financing or for the office manager, et cetera.
But you don't have a, a confirm, you couldn't confirm whether or not that's how it's going to be set up, that you're going to transact the, the entire on the
They're going to be, I think, I think what they're saying is, Meg, it's a good point you make. They're over, they overlap. I mean, I would imagine that the way you operate, because we talked about it, people could, you, you, they can do the transaction at either place. It would be dependent upon Toyota, how it wants to do with the owner, right?
Correct.
But for me, if, if all sales are going to be finalized and actually the actual sale, where you put your signature on what you agree to pay for and the financial terms are done across the street, I feel that's where the sale happened. So then I would say that there's no sales happening. There are preliminary negotiations and review. So it becomes more of a storage lot for the sales that are happening across the street. It is not a place where sales are transacted.
Well, I think
I think that's what we were thinking about. Is this a storage facility for a different business? Or a standalone, where there's discreet sales and then they sell the used cars that were turned in for the discreet sales that are on that lot? So about it, it seems to me is, look, if the other two businesses shut down, would this business continue to operate as it is freestanding without resort to all of those? And if the answer is it wouldn't, that's different than if the answer is it would. Sorry, that's not exactly what I'm asking. I understand that.
I'm sorry. I just finished.
Let me ask this and answer the question, please.
I was talking to the, to the attorney. I want to know what this business model is. I'm not saying that there isn't a parking lot and there isn't a bathroom and there isn't an office and it could be set up a certain way. What I want to know is how Toyota plans or the owners of this Toyota dealership plans to operate this business model, not what it's capable of doing, but how it intends to operate this business model, how it is going to be using this lot. So I don't think, I'm not asking, could you exist all by yourself if the others went away? I'm asking, what is the business model? Will the sales be finalized on this lot?
Certainly, if that's a condition of the approval, then the answer is yes, the sales could be consummated on this lot. And I guess my point is that's not how the other two properties were treated. Obviously, the, the big one across the street, the main lot, it's kind of a standalone entity, but for thirteen twelve, it, it receives its own standalone special permit use. And if down the road, this is turned into a Tesla lot and isn't part of the Toyota City, it's equipped and, and set up in such a way that could function on its own.
But that would have
And if it's a concern for Toyota City that, that sales need to be consummated on this lot, then yes, I can represent that. Yes, and I understand that that would be a condition of approval.
Just two quick things. Sir, if, if that's the case, if you were going to turn that into a different operation, that would require a different sale, a new special permit, because they, they don't, they don't run with the land, they run with the operator. Mr. Charlie, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, okay. So now, is it fair to say though, that you have people in this proposed building and somebody wants to buy a vehicle? And I, I, I just want to clear this up because I think Meg's raised this and Robin has. If somebody's in these buildings and, and they, they want to see a car across the street, the salespeople walk across the street. They're free to do that, aren't they? They're all employed. They're all part of the same operation, right?
Yes, although I don't know if they would walk them across the street or just send them to a different sales associate.
Oh, she, I mean, the salespeople cannot, they don't go across the street at all?
I, I, I don't know, Mr. Newfeld. We're, we're delving into aspects of the business that don't have so much to do with the special permit conditions. So I have
I, I think they have a lot to do with it, but that's my view, but I could be wrong. I, I'm told that I am sometimes and hopefully I'm not sometimes, but okay. I think that the question that's coming up here is this standalone base, this is all one operation. There's no service. If somebody needs to prep the vehicles or service the vehicles, they don't do it on this side of the street, do they?
There will be no service here.
Right, they would go across the street, right?
I don't, I'm not sure if there's a service facility across the street either. I don't, is, I'm not sure if there's a service facility across the street either. Services offsite, Toyota service base are nowhere in this area.
Oh, there's no service across the street?
I'm not sure about that.
The other question, just just to jump to for a moment, is the number of parking spots here. You have on the ones says five spots for customer parking. And then, oh, yeah, you have ten, you have ten spots for customer parking, right?
From our last meeting, yes, we had the dark stuff on data plan.
So how do how do we handle the people who are parked behind those, the cars that are parked behind there? So for example, you have this five spots on the one side, I guess the northerly side. And behind it, there are twenty one spots.
So so you have car jockeys, essentially, the the sales staff are used to moving cars around. This is, we're we're not out in Long Island where you have massive lots for car dealerships. Or or down south, it's no different than. How the car dealerships operate, ride Ford, for example, I I had it, I can't share my screen right now, but if you look at an aerial ride Ford, you essentially have a lot full of cars. And when somebody wants a specific car, it's someone's job to jockey cars around. If a customer's part of the way for getting a car moved out, then that they would have to speak to that customer and ask them to move their car in order to gain access to the cars that are in the back rows.
Well, as I see it, unless I'm missing something here, every one of the five spots that I see. On the west only side, the ones that are running, I suppose, were the east-west. They would all be blocking the twenty one spots behind them, right? If they were parked in there. So you said if somebody went, so basically, the only way to get those cars out is. Basically, to have those cars moved, they're not really parking spaces, then they'd have to move them and relocate. So somebody could take the car out, and you'd be jockeying to get, let's say, three cars behind them.
Correct, you'd have to jack into cars, even if there was no one parked in those five spaces, and somebody wanted a car that was all the way in the back row, I mean, that's the nature of a car dealership.
I'm sure any board members have any question regarding this?
Yeah, I have a question. If you find that at a certain time. When you're you're trading in a car and you sell a new car and you're trading in getting a used car. And you find that once, one location really. Has doesn't have any more room to store the used cars. But other locations do have the room to store the used cars. Would you then be taking those used cars and storing that at? At other locations that have that availability?
Present leave, yes, there's there's an offsite lot that's also owned by Toyota City that's not in the village of Marinerick. That is spillover storage for the the uses here. So the answer to that question is, yes, the current operator has the capability of doing that.
Oh, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't, if it was across the street, if you had some space across the street, you wouldn't. Store it across the street, you would store it in a location that's not a Marinerick? Is that what you're saying?
I'm I'm saying that the the operator has the capability of moving cars offsite if there is excess vehicles onsite. Whether that's the other two lots or to their storage lot, I think is in New Rochelle, it's on Lever Street, I believe. The current operator has the capability to do that.
I I think that's a, that's a good point, because if they're gonna be storing them across the street, then they are interrelated sites. And then there should be one special permit for all. If they're not gonna be storing them across the street, that's a different issue, so. It seems to me that's part of the question of going, you know, Greta raised a good point about that.
I guess that's one of the issues we'll take up on deliberation. I'm Robin, I'm sorry, I mean, to cut you off, you have, I think, because I had a, but go ahead, you have another question?
Now I'm done, I it just, it was just.
I just have, yeah, I think to follow up on what Robin just said, where I was gonna ask is, I'm a little confused on one aspect. We're selling on the other side of the street, do they sell new and used as well, or just new or just used?
They sell new and used on both existing lots.
Okay, so I wanna buy a new car, for example, hypothetically, somebody goes by to see a new car. There's the Toyota signs both sides, right? Where I, what makes, I just don't, I'm not able right now, at least, I'm I'm not sure I understand the distinction. She's, I think what Robin would have been saying, so I I want a new car. This amount, if I go to the one side, does that mean I can only get what's there, or do I then get to go to the other side? But then, you're telling me maybe the salesman or the saleswoman doesn't come across, so what happens then? I mean, it seems to me, this is one operation, I'm just trying to understand it from your standpoint. New and used cars, and I need a new Toyota, and I'm gonna pull up there. I'm gonna have a dilemma.
The current approvals for the other two lots are standalone individual permits. We're asking for this to be treated as a standalone individual permit, respectfully, the special permit requirements talk about. The location, size of the lot, the intensity, the traffic use, the screening. Hours of operation, i- it's not so much the operation itself. But you know, I I, even if this was a standalone operation, the fact that there may be some interrelation between the three properties. I don't think triggers this into becoming a. We're essentially merging those three properties into one, which is what we're trying to avoid. In theory, if we lost control, if I merge this lot into the other two, and we lost control of this lot, it would trigger a reapproval for the other two lots.
Let let's be clear on something, it's not a merger of property, I haven't heard anybody suggest you're merging or covenanting the key properties together. It's the operation that we're talking about, that's what a special permit is for. The special permit is to enable, it's a special permit for a particular operation. So somebody comes in and they've got a bookstore, and then I'm gonna hear, well, we have the children book special permit, we have the adult book special permit, we have the fiction, the nonfiction. In essence, you're you're, it's one operation here. It's just, I'm, it's spread out, it's 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 big. It's, there are big places, there are many bigger places in this, both for cars and noncars, and so my point is. I I'm not, and if you go to sell, then you have to just amend the permit to get rid of the part that you got rid of. But I, so I'm not following that, because to me, it's it's an operation. And the operation here that's operating is the car service. I had never seen it broken up like this, but you know, you may be right, I will deal with that after the hearing, I suppose.
And I guess my.
Are there bathrooms in here?
There there is.
And from your standpoint, when you say standalone, this will be a completely independent functioning aspect, other than. The sales may all be interrelated. But conceptually, the building itself, right? And this is all the cars that side will have to sell will be those that that are available, will be in the twenty one spots. And in the, I guess, the thirty five. Is it forty five parking stalls only? What is that? Forty five means what? A thirty, sorry, so thirty five is for the vehicles, right?
Orch, yes.
Right, so those are the, that's the inventory.
Yes, I didn't, there's another two, they're not included in our parking stamp, but the showrooms capable of having another couple cars inside there as well.
So I think much of the confusion is that if I'm over there and I say, you know, I see a nicer color that I want across the street.
There's nothing that stops you from walking across the street.
And nothing that stops the salesman or the salesperson from coming across, right?
Other than you can't leave the sales room unstaffed.
That's a valid, valid point, and that would be true the other way as well, right? Anyone, any other board member have any questions? Does anyone from the public have any questions? Do you have anything you wanna answer?
No, I I think we we've revised.
Anyone a motion on this? Motion to close this hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, Greta? Robin? And I'll go yes to the hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, just, so I understand process, you deliberate at your next meeting or later tonight?
Uh, probably at the next meeting. I mean, I I don't, I I can't tell that, I'm my crystal ball is broken right now, but I would. Mention to say it's usually the next meeting. Sometimes two meetings from now, but we try to do it by the next meeting.
And and then motions for resolutions would be at that same meeting following deliberation, or that's another meeting after that?
No, the deliberations usually, well, it really is dependent, first of all, we have two more months, but usually, as a matter of practice. They'll deliberate, and then if we deliberate and there's conditions, et cetera, we will sometimes wait. To actually pass the resolution until it's drafted for us. There's a, some crazy cases that basically don't require that, but that's been our practice. Because if we try to do conditions and they're all verbal, they get a little confusing. Okay, super. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening. The next matter on the agenda tonight is five thirty three Walton. Avenue. Maybe I'll stop liking paper, but I think about the trees. Is the applicant here on us? That was not here, okay, maybe, you know what? I wonder if we asked the applicant to be.
I'm just, it takes a moment for him to load.
All right, we won't tell him you said that.
I heard it, good evening.
Good evening, sir, good evening. Um, I think what would be helpful is in, and happy new year to you.
Happy New Year.
You did discuss the variances, I saw you made a submission on that, you went over. You made a submission on December sixteen regarding that. What variances were required, and you actually gave us another application, I believe, but I think we. It didn't change the substance of anything, to my knowledge. And there is a survey you gave us as well. You know, there's, I wonder if this bothers people, but there is a, there's a large plan, zoning board that meets in the town of Brookhaven, which is a very large town. And they all sit there on this giant thing with all these computers. And it's sort of like very strange when you're talking to them, because you're really, they're all doing this and you're over here, I don't mean to be rude, I found that unnerving. All right, let's see what I have, so. We just pull that up if I may, so we have it. Does anyone else complain, Bernie, that every time I go to push it, I get the Board of Architectural Review issue instead? They don't go, they're not equal, it's sort of, they're between the two, but, okay.
I'm not in love with that website, but.
It's the little icon for the thing, doesn't, it's sometimes.
Right, it can be off a bit, every time I go, what's this, this is on the agenda, that's what I did earlier. I didn't know, what is this about? I haven't even seen that before, oh, there's architecture review. Okay, so it does reflect the filings on December twenty eight of a host of items, applications. Building application, owner certification, et cetera, okay. Yeah, I think we've, we've kind of know this property, it is what I would call unique and unusual. I I I don't live that far from it, and I, in the time I moved here, I actually, when I first moved here, I should say, I went up to the owner one day and I said, wow. How have they ever developed this thing? How have they ever built this? It's sort of strange when you say it, but interesting. So do you have anything you wanna present, or should we just go right to the board, ask you questions if they have?
Yeah, if I maybe show the the updated.
By all means, by all means, sir, that's why I asked.
We specifying a bit more.
And by the way, your cover letter was very helpful, it explained things very clearly.
Say it again?
I say your cover letter, I believe that was your letter of. Thank you, that was, that was helpful, that was very clear.
Cover letter, and also we thank God later on, a letter also from the the town of, I mean, from the building department. And specifying the same thing, I mean, we're asking, in principle, we're asking for three variances. And in the last previous meetings, we had the one where it declared about the coverage. Where we actually running right now, but it's allowed thirty five percent, and we have currently forty. And if the the kitchen addition, we would add, we would add another two percent, which could bring us to forty two point eight percent. So that was the one variance we asked for. And then the the two other variances are more defined now or specified in reference to the steps. And landing, and for that purpose, I can, can you see the side plan? Okay, and this is basically the area where we talk about the stair with landing. And on the, on the, let me just see, on the opposite side here, on the side plan, I was. Enlarging it, which really gives the more detailed dimensions. And in reference to the side plan, you can see, obviously, that the buildable area is very minute from front yard. And the the left or the the side yard that be reached this hall, because there would really need the variances.
Is that, sir, I can interrupt you, is that the, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt you, is that the? I'm looking for it on the system, is that December first that you submitted, it's a November fifth plan, or is that a later one?
No, 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 this is, this is basically the same, the side plan is the same, this is information. All what I did on the side plan is showing the bigger enlargement.
Right, okay.
Or to go into more a clearer picture.
Right, so.
The one variance for landing and stair is the front yard. We have currently. Setback for the steps here, that's basically twenty point seven feet. And obviously, we 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 need, because it's twenty five foot front yard, we need a variance of twelve. Twelve foot, twelve point three feet. The side yard is fifteen feet required. And we have a setback actually on the on the on the stair as one point two five. So we would need a variance of of thirteen point seven five feet. But that's really the specification on from the late meeting. In particular, the stair landing, where it wasn't clear, and this is more defined now.
And your photographs are very good, you have a nice aerial here that shows. What I call the island. Do any members of the board have any questions?
I I have one question, because I was a little confused about something, when was this building built? Did we have any information about when this was built?
Yeah, I can tell you this in a second, that building was built in. Just go back to the. I've written in the description here. The owner acquired it in two thousand sixteen, but the building goes back to the nineteen fifties.
Okay, so this, if if I'm correct, since we had zoning way before the nineteen fifties in Marinerick. Um, when this building was built, it didn't comply with the code at the time it was built. So it isn't a. Not permitted, not, uh, nonconforming use, because it was never in compliant with the code.
Okay, so it's a nonconforming.
Well, it's not nonconforming, it was a never in, it wasn't noncom, it did never. Of the, do we know what the code was in the nineteen fifties to confirm that? I mean, what are we basing that assumption on, what the the. Requirements were in nineteen fifty this lot?
The the, they would never have, basing it on, I guess you say, common sense. That it is very unlikely that the code at any point in time would have allied, would have allowed. Some of these lack of setbacks, lack of distances, et cetera. We haven't changed in some ways the code all that much, although I don't know where, I used to have a lot of.
Yeah, just, just, just so we're.
It could have gotten variances at the time, we're making some assumptions that are, there are lots to think about. But that we have the facts to know what was the situation when it was built.
Yeah, I think, I think we can say it's nonconforming, we don't know what it, I will say this, though, that you should all know, I, it's, some of you may not be aware of this. But Orianna, at one point, and I learned this from someone who lived here. And before they moved out, they said to me, they had been here since a child, and I said, oh, and he said, yeah, this used to be all little mini cottages. And people would come up from the city and they would rent them or buy them. So the whole area, if you take a look, some of the side streets still have those little cottages, and there's a few left on. So the whole area, if you take a look, some of the side streets still have those little cottages and there's a few left on Rushmore. They're small and very undersized. So it, it might have been, I just, but we don't know.
But may I also say something where I think my client also informed me when he bought the property in two thousand sixteen. He actually, knowing about obviously, you know, the lot size and where the houses, he actually approached the town. And he would, he approached them basically to buy more property around the house. To make it more, you know, if you want to say in the zoning or in the requirements, more, more, you know, line. Though the town turned him down to do that. But he, he offers goodwill to do that, just as.
This way he has it for nothing, right? I mean, honestly, that's, I understand that. That, that happens occasionally.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you know, it's, no, no one's going to use that properly. It's, it's.
No.
I was actually, have seen this house. I've lived here for about thirty-five years and when I saw it, more than that, actually, when I saw this house, when I saw the survey, I went, wow. But, you know, but that happens. It's, uh, it's not, it's not common, but it's. I lived adjacent to fourteen acres in Huntington, New York. People never wanted to develop the fourteen acres and they said, use it. And our yard went into it. People used to comment what a huge yard I have. I said, well, yeah. Good. Any other questions? Does anyone have any questions? Excuse me, sir, you did say one thing. You said that it was non-conforming. Did you look into the history at all to find out anything that might help Ms. Kramer's question or provide an answer?
Say it again, please. I didn't know.
Did you look into, I thought you had said it was non-conforming. So my question is, did you ascertain, how did you ascertain it was non-conforming or conforming?
No, I mean, I'm just going by a guesstimate, but it's basically on all the, the CO fours we have received. They have all, you know, basically approved it as, as applicable to zoning.
Gotcha. Okay.
That's the interesting part, okay? So. And, and going back, actually, let me just see, I see the, here, it goes back to the original. Just give me a second here. Two.
Well.
There is a certificate of occupancy dated March two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now and that goes.
And there's one dated, um, twenty-two, wasn't there another? I thought that I saw another one. Right. And if it was built in two thousand sixteen, we know it was, it's non-compliant. So the question was, was there an older one? And if so, when it was built? Clearly, it would could, if it was built in two thousand sixteen, it was non-compliant.
But it's got, how does it get the CO? I mean, but it may have got variances or something. I don't.
Or somebody didn't look at it, where the building department didn't look carefully.
In the file, there is actually on the, your March, March sixteen, two thousand sixteen, there is literally an official certificate of occupancy of one twenty dwelling on this property declared, okay?
Right.
I have that document in the, in your, in the application as well.
Robin, they probably went out, looked at the house crash. They hadn't said, sure.
Probably. I, I, my guess is if in fact it was built in two thousand sixteen.
It wasn't, it wasn't built in two thousand sixteen. That I can guarantee you.
Well, no, I understand that even though the CFO says new building two thousand sixteen, that's my, that's what I'm saying.
I see what you're saying. That's a good point.
Um, and so we, we doubt that it was, if it was built in two thousand sixteen, it was clearly non-compliant. The assumption about if it was built in the fifties is, is an assumption it was non-compliant.
On the other hand, the existence of a CO is almost a prima facie.
Right, that it's that legal.
Completely illegal.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not, we're not the authority over rule, I would say, but I.
I, I'm not planning on that. I mean.
It's an interesting issue. That's why I use the word unique.
David, is that in, because I know what the, again, is, is there a provision? I was wondering about that. Is there a provision? Certainly there's no, I don't think there's anything in the Maranek code. Maybe there is about a CFO being, you know, essentially as you said, prima facie, case rule that it is, is there something? Or is there something in state law? I mean, I only know of something in New York City, but that's in the code. So.
You know, the question you come down to was, is there an estoppel issue really? But, um.
Well, there is no, there's no such thing as a estoppel.
Well, not usually.
So, but, but no, so my question is, does, I'm just gonna look at that up now, see if the Maranek codes, if the village code says something about it. Out of curiosity, but we can go ahead without it because whatever it is, we're not making it.
Yeah. We're not gonna make a move the house today.
No.
Maybe next week. Anyone else on the board have any questions? Is there anyone here from the public that has any questions? Sir, do you want to add anything? You can't subtract, but you can.
It's case of pleading, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think it's, it's a tough one. It's a, it's a difficult situation and, but it's, it's understandable and it's been there and actually, you don't even have any adjacent neighbors. You have no, you, you, you're on your streets on every wood side. Yeah. Okay. No one else has any inquiries? Is there a motion on this?
A motion is closed.
Second, is there a second on this?
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, Meg?
Yes.
Okay, Greta?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So the hearing is closed. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't see any.
Okay, one second. Walton. The next matter will be nine eleven Fairway Lane, Lane. Campilli, I believe I'm pronouncing it. I hope I'm. For area variance with regard to a generator. It's gonna be one second to put this file away.
I did send the owner an email because I don't see her in the attendees list. I have not heard back yet.
I suggest they abandoned their application, are you?
About that.
Okay, so why don't we, um, we can just.
To the next application.
Yeah, I'll just go right to the next one. Just give me one second, so I can get it. And then the other was one second. Okay. The next application is on three ninety-seven Palmer Avenue, special permit application pursuant to three forty-two, forty-one, forty-two, one by three ninety-seven Palmer Avenue. I'm sorry, by.
Good evening, Chair.
Excellent, Shen for, for Richen Inc. Good evening.
Good evening. You threw me for a curveball, members of the zoning board. I actually still have a spoon in my right hand as I was digging into ice cream, so I'd have throw that thing back to the freezer. You're, you're.
Flavor.
Mint chocolate chip.
I'm sorry. You sprinkles or something, right?
Both the chips and extra coconut. Yeah, anyway. Uh.
Let the record reflect, let the record reflect that you've eaten that and none of us have and you haven't offered it to us. But that's all right now. With that in mind, please continue.
I got the proof. Uh, anyway, good evening, everyone. Andrew Spats for the applicant, six fifty Hallstead Avenue, Suite one oh five. Happy and healthy in New York to everyone. Uh, Chair members of zoning board, this is a fairly, um, direct application. Um, I believe my client previously filed last spring or early summer. There were a lot of issues with the application. She sought my assistance. Um, I just want to make sure that Zhang Xin is on, Brittany, is there a way? I see Dennis.
I can promote her.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. I just want to make sure that she's present. Um, and until she is promoted, just so everyone understands, this, my client actually purchased a previously existing massage establishment located at that premises. Uh, this was done in May twenty twenty-one. Um, with regards to the actual professional building, a certificate of occupancy for the building on, was actually provided with my application that was filed um, back December ninth, nineteen fifty-eight, it was issued. Since the professional building was built, the zoning for that particular area changed to an R two F, which is a one-two family residential area, which would make the building a previous existing, now non-conforming. There are other existing professional businesses located in this, this professional building, specifically a dentist and oral surgeon. They actually take the entire first floor. Um, the applicant is fully licensed in the state of New York to practice massage therapy. The office space to be rented, um, does have and satisfies a required parking, lighting, ventilation, so that it can safely be operated. Um, it should be noted that across the street on Palmer, there are other commercial retail uses located. I think there's a small, um, Delta, not LA, newsstand and other commercial uses. I, I provided pictures of that as well. Um, and as the ZBA is aware, massage therapy is regularly and regulated as professional under Title Eight of Education Law, Section seventy-eight oh one. There's nothing in the village zoning code that defines applicants to use otherwise. Um, and Chair, thank you for allowing us to file the certificates with the board, um, recently. I was on the impression that we would file and do all the pedigree information with the local authorities after, in the event an approval was granted, because there is quite a bit of detail in that pedigree information with regards to social security.
Thank you. You did, I let the record reflect that you did provide the, um, the education department's.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, thank you.
Can I applaud the zoning?
Did you provide anything other than the, the professional, the license?
Uh, Ms. Jürgen, at this point, Ms. Jin, only that, what she provided me is what I shared with you. Um, and I.
I'm just checking. I'm just checking if I missed.
No, and then I anticipate in the event they add anyone else, the, I, I'm happy to say that our code is very, very thorough about the requirements. Uh, anybody working there needs to provide fingerprints, needs to be registered with the village PD. Um, they, they're, it's vetted. So our code is very thorough with respect to assuring the safety, well-being and the professional um, uh, experience that the facility would have. So, um, and I reiterated the importance of that to the applicant. That is a very important. This is a professional building. This is a great community and, um, we need adhere to all those provisions, so.
As do all special permit applicants.
Of course, but in particular, you know, I, we, we understand the nature of the business. We understand some of the concerns and, as I said, as an attorney that now he works, has office here. I reside here, so we want to maintain a, a good reputation for the community.
And as far as the other requirements, the, the, for example, the requisite filing and the completion of other materials that have to be provided to, I guess, to the village or the police department.
Absolutely.
Those are all, but an answer, I think, but, um, so I say, but those will all be provided as a condition of the permit if they would. I can understand that you wouldn't do those until you had the permit. I would say, I mean.
Yes.
Okay.
It do have language in the code that says no permit shall be issued until something happens. Does that mean we could vote on it without it? Or, I mean, we could still write that as a condition when the language actually says no permit shall be.
Where are we referring to on that?
This is under three forty-two dash forty-two point one number three. Some of the language is, it shall not be a step.
Phone numbers, yeah.
I'm sorry?
No, I see the phone numbers, the social security, the employees.
Others say the.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, I, I guess I read that as saying, otherwise, why would some, I mean, it'd be difficult, I would think, to go into the police department and say, hi, I'm here to give you this information about the employees that I don't employ. For this, I mean, I, I think it was, was a fair reason, but I understand what you're saying, but literally that does say that. Is that no operation could take place. The permit would not be effective. Maybe that's the way to deal with it.
I mean, I think when we issue. If we issue the special permit, if we approve a special permit for this use, then the special permit would be conditioned on the things that we're not having today. And unless and until those things, whatever those conditions were met, wouldn't be, you know, the fact that they had a piece of paper that, that we said something, they don't, if they don't comply with all the conditions, then, you know, this special permit shall automatically terminate or not be an.
You could also, that's a good point, Robin. There's another way you could do it, I think, that maybe even more direct and Meg's concerned. And that would simply say, this permit, uh, which is granted, is not effective.
Until.
Until, as opposed to a condition, but if this is springing use, it's not effective until we do A, B, and C. Then it becomes effective, right?
It's a conditional use in the, in the sense of.
It's a condition on the conditional use.
Even. Yes, and even the signage is required as we found, we had another application that came to us and they never had put the sign in and actually a signage requirement, so that's all.
Ms. Jürgen.
We couldn't put the sign in, could you?
Because it says all, if you look at sub four, all massage establishments shall have such and such. In fact, they can't have that until they are a massage establishment.
Right, I understand. I'm just bringing up the fact that we have missed that in the village in the past, so.
Oh, I got you. Okay, no, I think what you're really saying, Meg, I, I guess the real point is, is, is Robin just brought up too, is that if the permit were to be granted, it would be only effective upon complete compliance with these operating conditions. You couldn't operate until. And the people who would know that best of anybody would be the people who are supposed to get this, which would be the village and the police department.
You would think.
Also, Chair.
Without meeting these standards, so that, you know, gives me pause. I have a, I have a pre, sort of a preliminary question, a more preliminary question. Which is, this is a non-conforming use because it's not, right? The build, the use as, as the applicant says, didn't the applicant say?
The building is non-conforming.
Correct.
Right.
But the building, the use is in the building. It's not, are we talking about the use or the structure? We're talking about the uses in the building, correct?
Well, both.
Right, right.
If the building without a use would be, yeah.
My, but my point is, building can be non-conforming with respect to physical structure or it can be non-conforming with respect to use. You could take this building and convert it into a, an apartment building and then you would be conforming, or maybe not. I don't know what the apartments are. Okay, but here's my concern. The first question that we have to, haven't discussed and we need to is, so why, so what the code says about non-conforming uses, because that's what this is, a non-conforming use of the building, shall not be altered structured. We're not altering extending or structure, so that's fine. We're not, but we are altering it, which actually technically you've already altered. So any non-conforming use of a building shall not be changed to another non-conforming use except who are approved by the board after finding that no, the change will be to, to a less non-conforming use and one that will be more harmonious with the surrounding area. So I think we need to make that determination, either that it is the same, I know the CFO calls it a professional building, but I don't know what that means. Or that the change is to a no, to, um, a less non-conforming use. And I think that's a preliminary that we need to determine before we can even grant this. That, that's.
But I'm gonna take that up if we could, excuse me. We'll take that up with deliberation. I think what you're really saying, Robin, if I could, and I didn't mean to cut you off, Greta, but was that what is the non-conforming aspect? And as I see it, the non-conforming aspect is that its existence and use as a professional building or an office building, whatever it is, is what's the non-conformity. And to say that nobody else can come in and change it is effectively to say that it's a non usable building. So, but we can take that up. I guess that is something. If the applicant wants to speak to it, he can, but.
I would like to ask the applicant, are you saying that this use is less non-conforming than the previous use? Or are more harmonious with the area as Robin?
Or the same, or the same.
The text, we would, we would like to ask the, you know, give.
Ask them.
Counsel the chance to tell us how they see this use. Is it less, um, non-conforming? Or is it more harmonious with the, with the district now? And I just, so you know, Mr. Spats, I was reading three forty-two sixty-four B, just in case you were looking for the code reference.
Well, first, our, our code does define office building um, in, in the sense of a building occupied or used for business or professional offices of individuals. of individuals, partnerships, associations, or corporations. Um, and also, we define, our code defines massage establishment, and based upon the fact that this is a professional building recognized back in nineteen fifty-eight, although the zone around us changed, we're still consistent with the building's use as it's permitted today. Um, because, again, like you pointed out, we're not expanding it. We're not changing the exterior. We're not seeking enlargement. We're merely replacing what was previously there, which was a previous massage uh facility, with a new one. So in essence, I I believe it's a net, net zero. There's no difference in what was previously there before. So there is no net.
The 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 previous one, though, didn't get a special permit. So was it a legal massage establishment? Can you say that? If, I thought we saw in the, in the, in the parcel history that there was a complaint that it was exist, it was.
Ms. Jürgen, if there wa- I I don't know the exact legality of what transpired before. I did foil the file. And unfortunately, that was when Omicron, I I it was difficult getting access to the file, but we did foil it so we could look through the entire file itself. Um, so I really, I don't know the lineage of what transpired. Um, the landlord, who I met with and spoke with in great depth, did advise me that there was a previous establishment there. Um, and as I indicated, on the entire first floor, it's a dental surgery, oral surgery, and cleaning um hygienist on the first floor. So I would say that i- i- it's really, it is har- in harmony with the existing use of that building. On, especially in light of the fact that right directly across the street on Palmer, there are other businesses and retail establishments. We're on the cusp of the industry area, as you know, that location. Um, so I I I would say it's not exactly like being in a um, in the middle of a residential area. Um, so I I think there's a mixed use sort of in that particular um, in that particular area.
It's across the street from that, the co-op apartment?
Yes.
Let me ask you, and there are there, are they using, are they structurally changing the size of the space?
Absolutely. They're doing, uh, and I'll let to my app.
No, I just answered that. Yes or no? That's all.
I don't believe so. No.
You know, this, this, um, it appears that this zoning change was in nineteen eighty-two. Um, can you advise whether there's been continual businesses in that office building since nineteen eighty-two?
Sandy, that's, that's a good question. I I can't, again, I did foil the um.
Can you ask, can you get him?
Could ask the landlord. I mean, I could make that inquiry. Um, let me see if I see anything in my notes from when I met with him with regards to ownership. And I don't believe he was the original. He definitely isn't the original owner. I think that was.
They've always used that as an office building, correct? Or for professional service.
That's, that's what, um, in fact, the the nineteen fifty-eight certificate of occupancy, where is it? I believe the fine, yes, nineteen fifty-eight um, professional building by Bern Hall Holding Corp. I mean, didn't specify in terms of what the businesses were in there, but did say it was a professional building.
But if it was vacant for a period of time, that might be important information for.
I understand that. I I understand what you're saying. No, I I I don't have the the lineage in that regard.
Chairboard, this is Dennis Drogen, building inspector, or or one of the building inspectors. There's always been a professional in that structure.
I'm sorry.
Uh, since the very beginning, the intended use has always been used as a professional building. I can't stand for who it was, but I recall while looking through all the backlog, plus talking to the surrounding residents and also the people who made complaints on the building prior about garbage and other issues that may have happened in the past. There's always been a professional there at the dental clinic, I believe, has been there for over twenty years. If that, I can definitely speak for. But, um, you know, going back, there's always been a professional office in that building.
It's never been an abandoned building.
Never vacant. Maybe a couple of days after the structure.
Thank you also, Drogen.
I wasn't there for that.
All right.
And there are no structural, there's no structural changes being made, Mr. Spats, right?
Absolutely not. No.
If you're, if you'd like my opinion on that as well, nothing is being altered inside the their unit. Um, everything is keeping with the prior tenant of the prior tenants, or going back two tenants ago. There are no changes, no walls are being erected or down. They're keeping everything by ceiling plan. Everything's exactly.
Who's just the use two tenants ago? You mentioned two tenants ago. What was the use then?
Area, there are professional offices that that were in keeping with the last tenant.
I'm sorry, I thought the last tenant was the, was the massage um establishment. And about two tenants ago, I was just curious what the tenant.
You're talking about this particular rental space or the building?
That that particular rental space. How, what has come to my attention is that the, the last tenant made no changes to that floor as well. Everything is in keeping with the prior tenant. So that's, if this is one tenant now, we're talking about who's looking for the special permit. The one path was a massage therapist or 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 some type of business like that. And then prior to that, they were all professional medical offices. So it could have been a doctor's clinic. I don't recall what it is offhand, or what it was.
Anyone else have any questions? Is there anyone here? I'm sorry, guy.
I have a que- a couple of questions. So is this, um, is this massage, proposed massage business going to be on the second floor? The first floor. So the second floor is the dental. So the whole second floor is the dental?
Yes, ma'am.
And what about the first floor? Is there anything, any other business on the first floor?
Nope.
So the the massage business will be the entire first floor?
Yes.
Okay, I I don't know if you can um, answer this, but back in nineteen eighty-two, before it converted to an R two F, was a massage business a permitted business use for that, for that building, that location?
By virtue of the fact that it was professional building, I'm going to venture and say that it would have been, it would have been, it would be legal based upon the definition as defined by the New York State Education Law. Um, it's deemed, it would would qualify as such. Um, our massage establishment language looks like it was added or created in two thousand six, I believe, Ms. Haney. Uh, I'm looking at, uh, I'm just looking at abstracts here. Um, but just looking. But by definition of of professional building and educational law seventy-eight oh one, I I can't see how it would not otherwise be permitted um legally by, you know, in the village.
Anyone here from the public has any questions?
Um, I have a que- oh, I have one more question. Sorry. Um, a- and I don't know, I don't think there are separate requirements for parking for massage establishments. Is there a problem? I'm trying to picture whether.
There's a parking lot there in the building, isn't there?
I understand. I just didn't know whether um, it's all just shared. Whoever gets there, is there a pro- an issue with the parking? Um, I'm honestly trying to remember, but I don't remember. I don't recall there being any, it's pretty close to where I live. Um, I don't recall there being any backups onto the, onto either Fennemore on, um, so I don't see that. I don't think it's an, I've never seen it as an issue. That's why.
This is cream. I did provide photographs also of that, exactly of of the parking area. And because this is pretty much like a a sole proprietorship, the amount of traffic in and out with this facility will be very little. Uh, there's only one or two therapists that will be on site.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions regarding this? Okay. You have anything to add, Mr. Spats?
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be back with everybody.
No, I said, do you have anything to add?
That's all.
I didn't know what you were asking. No, I thought maybe I didn't speak.
I know you all.
A pleasure to be back, but it's okay. You can answer it that way. Thank you. We all thank you. All right. Um, is there anything else anyone has on this, or do you want to close the hearing on this?
I mean, do you have, does my client?
Just, Mr., just a second. Okay.
Sorry, I do have somebody raising their hand, but I'm not sure if this is a member of the public. Should I promote them?
I suppose so. There are human beings.
We don't know. We'll find out.
My dog will come right in. Marty! By the way, I once was at another board, not this one, whose name would be on it. And they took a break, and when they came back, sitting right where I'm sitting, was my dog. And I will tell you, nobody said a word for about a minute. I finally said, I'm Marty out of here. But I I was, as a one of my funniest moments, I just said, no one's saying a thing. Do we, did we promote somebody up with their can raised? Hello, how are you?
Hi, my name's Teresa. I live three doors away from the professional building all my life. And I just have a couple of questions. Uh, I am concerned because it is a residential zone neighborhood. And we're all, a lot of people have been there seventy years and more. And um, as new people are moving in, I'd like to keep the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I'm very, very happy, my Maranic, it's beautiful. And I just want to know, this is a new corporation for Ms. Shin, right? She was just incorporated in June.
I believe that could be the case in June. Right, I saw that.
Does she have any other establishments anywhere as a masseuse or running a massage parlor? Has she ever done this before?
Okay, we'll find.
Opened.
So you want to know her prior experience or involvement with with uh spa, massage?
Right.
Exactly.
Okay, another question you have?
Um, and I just, you know, I I, because day of COVID, I can't go around and go door to door and get everyone's opinion. I'm just worried because I want to keep the neighborhood safe. And yes, it is. Um, they are performing under a a nonconforming permit. The establishment's across the street on Palmer Avenue. It's a stationary store. It's a a shampooch for for animals. It's a a deli. And that building has always had medical personnel in there, except for four years ago, when they had a massage place there, and it was operating without a permit. And there was a complaint, and they were forced to close. And I don't have the specifics of the complaint. Only that they didn't have a permit.
Right.
So I'm just, I'm just a little wary. I'm just want, you understand where I'm coming from?
Of course, you live nearby, and you're concerned about you. Well, you want to just not, but but as you just pointed out, and and I'm delighted to hear this, but that when there was a complaint, somebody operating without a permit, they were closed, which is what's supposed to happen. But why don't we, I'll find out that other question for you.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your questions.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Spats?
Chair.
Could you address the issue that was just raised by, uh, I don't know her last name, it's Teresa who lives in the neighborhood, about the prior uh experience and the uh with.
Sure.
It's recent, thank you. I'm just looking here at the date on the um two thousand thirteen. Oh, show her the the miss, the uh, the licenses from two thousand thirteen that you provided. Right? Mrs. Spats?
Let me take a look at the actual.
The for, um, yeah, state of New York.
I would be delighted to allow my client to address her experience and.
I think it's, I don't, that may be the case. I don't think I was giving them a test on their abilities. It's more in terms of has she had experience in this area, I think, than they would like to know. This is someone who's doing this. And I would point out to Teresa that they've given, they're in the record, but there are two um licenses that they have to file. And they're by the State Education Department of New York, and the one is dated September twenty-five, two thousand thirteen. So I think, why don't you have your client address that if you would please?
Sure.
Or could have the benefit of that.
Sure. Um, Ms. Shin. Can you unmute your, please?
Yes.
One of the neighbors asked a question about your experience and ability, obviously, to run the establishment. Could you share with the board and the neighbor a little bit about your experience in your business and how you plan on operating your business? If given the permission to do so.
Example like what? I show them a.
Well, let me just ask you a question. I just want to make sure you understand.
Yeah.
You're being asked. So let's just start. What is your experience?
Uh, you mean, I I did my facial?
No, let's take a step back. What the neighbor wants to know, and what the chair was asking, what experience? Do you have?
Do you have experience? Do you have experience in a spa, massage as?
Yeah, I was, yes, yes, I was, I was.
Please.
Yes. I was working for the, for the flushing. Yes.
Okay. So you've done this before?
Yeah, yeah, I done this before.
And you know how to run a business?
Um, yeah, it's a yes, I know, yeah.
You understand that there's certain requirements, like, let's say, hours?
Yes, oh, yeah, yes, yes.
You have to comply with.
Yes.
There's certain requirements that the village is going to have, that you have to listen to.
Yes.
To be a good neighbor.
Yes.
Okay. And you've worked, you you've done massages before. This isn't your first time.
Oh, I I did before.
Okay.
You you were licensed in two thousand thirteen? Is that when your license was issued to you?
You. Uh, Shin, you you sent me several documents.
Yes.
One of which is yours. The chair wants to know, when was your license grant? When did you get your license?
Uh, I don't remember exactly the date, but a few, few years ago, a second. Um, yeah, probably like two thousand, I don't remember exactly the date.
Well, maybe the chair could refresh your recollection because you provided us certain documents that I actually sent to, I sent to them. Chair, is it okay if I, if I?
I want to, I and I assume is English is not your primary language, your original language?
Yeah, no.
So please, I understand that. No, this is, so just, it's fine. No, we've, we've got two licenses here. One is license O two seven one two four, which looks like it was issued in two thousand thirteen. Now, I'm not sure, and I'm not good with pronunciations on this, but that's a.
Zeng Huhan.
Okay, I'll go with that. And the other one is um, O three two one four four.
Yes, Zeng Li.
Right.
And then there's a Department of State Division of Licensing to Shang, Shen Zhang. That's uh, number one three three four zero eight five, Chair. Issuing issuance two thousand nineteen.
Got you. Okay. All right. Teresa, does that respond to? Just so you, I just wanted to make sure you're comfortable. That's all. And I want to make sure you got the answer to your inquiry. So she's been licensed, and she's operated before. And, I mean, as far as whether she'll be successful or not, with that would be something that always comes up is, you know, people open up things, be it restaurants or other things, and.
Okay. Also, I'd like to know her hours of um, operation.
Yeah, they're controlled by the code, I believe.
Absolutely. Uh, we have that in the application here. Um, can you just get to it?
But I believe the code actually specifies.
Oh, sure does. But in fact, but we're not go, we're not utilizing the full extent of that. It's ten AM to nine PM. The code permits, I think, until ten o'clock. We're not looking.
Okay, all right.
Oh, it also, excuse me, I I neglected, uh, this might be of interest. I neglect, there's also a license from the New York State Department of State for practicing cosmetology. That was provided to us.
Right. Right.
Yeah, and that's two thousand nineteen. And that is. Looks like it's license AEC fifteen double O five O five. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? I have one question. How many employees or other people do you do you plan to have in the near future?
In the beginning, uh, plasma maybe three, but I don't know in the future if business go yet, hire the more people.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, Chair Newfield, we come back in two years. This is a very limited, short term.
Approval.
We want to see you, that's all. Then I'll upgrade to a different ice cream and hopefully I'll actually be back in in person. But we, so we understand.
You only come back in two years if you get the permit the first time.
Understood.
Okay, fair enough. Anyone else? Any questions? Okay, there any motion on this? I'll move to close. And a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Greta?
Yes.
Robin?
You're on mute, Robin?
Have to hold up a sign when we vote then, if you can.
Yes.
Okay.
I vote yes.
Meg, okay, I vote yes. Okay, the hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, members of zoning board again. Pleasure to see everybody. Stay well, stay safe and have a great rest of the evening.
Enjoy your ice cream, sir.
I'm not, I'm on it. I got it right here. Thank you.
That's my concern. That's my biggest.
Good night.
Good night.
Mission, you can, you can hang up now, Mission.
Good night, Mission. Last matter, did the people from nine eleven Fairway arrive? Are they here?
Have not gotten any response via email, so no.
Okay, so we've emailed them. They knew it was on for tonight and they're not here, right? How about, how about the we, the board have any problem if we just adjourn that for a month?
I think it's fine. It's the first time they've not been.
Yeah, I mean.
This, things happen.
A lot of days in the month, they could have gotten confused.
Also, very strange period of time. There's a lot going.
Oh, there's a lot going on. I'm I'm being serious. My son, supposed to be in Europe, he ended up to going down, driving down to Georgia with his kids. And the other day he was coming home and I heard on the news about the Virginia overnight. And he was with three kids and his wife.
Hi.
I just. He said he got off the highway, was finally got off the highway and he just drove. First, he tried to drive north, but he couldn't. He said he just drove south until he found something called the hotel or a motel. It was like, but people have issues with food. I mean, it's insane with. I'm going to get three, four people in my office because ridiculous. Um. Why I think remote will be the new way. All right. So we're going to push that off for that. Okay, um, we have a couple of other items if we want to take up first. Let me just get my file on that, please. Resolutions. Okay. We have preliminary drafts on two. We have one on Fortuna Food Services, also known as the Quack Donut or Duck Donut. Um. And there is a proposed resolution on that. Does everybody have that?
Yes.
Only question I had Charlie on that was on the second page. On the second, whereas it says, based on the above, the proposed Dunkin' Donuts restaurant on the premises should be classified as a carryout. I was thinking, are we overstepping? And it may be great the way it is. I was going to say, maybe we should be the proposed duck donuts. Is classified as a carryout by the zoning board to ensure as opposed to changing it because it's not ours to change. That's my reason. And we're treating it as that. I I just don't know. It seems like. And when you had the designation is simply to ensure, I don't know. I just wonder if we're stepping too far. We can say the same thing by simply saying, we're treating it as this to ensure that the use premises is properly is is adequately defined, but I leave that to others because we have people who are professional restaurateurs who talk about this. Robin and Meg, you two, I think.
I think this is similar language that we've already used for a couple other.
All right, that's fine. Anyone have any question or any other points on this resolution?
Yeah, I just got some language.
Please.
Couple of changes. So on page two, at the middle of the, towards the bottom, it says the board deliberated on the application at its December second. Didn't it also deliberate today? Aren't we also? So you need to.
That's correct. Charlie, do you have that?
Yep, I got it.
And then is a just technically English, the next one, it says where the, where is the application is, uh, it's not, is for a special use permit renewal with no change in size or use or layout because.
Very good. Yeah, yeah.
It isn't sufficient to say it's no size or use.
Okay, so that would be whereas the application is for a special use permit renewal with no change in size, layout or something or whatever, or use, right? Okay.
Okay, got it.
We say operations?
Operations. Yeah, that's okay, too. Instead of layout, we could say operations.
Although we know less about that, though.
Yeah, I thought we asked them that if there were going to be any changes and they said.
We did. I think it's fine.
Anything else?
Are we making this with any term or are we stating that it doesn't have a term? Should we?
I don't think it needs a term. We had a special permit. It operated.
This is in that shopping center, right? The small one across from me.
I don't see why we, I mean, it's customary for us not to have terms. I don't see why we would need to issue a term.
Right. It's just, I've seen some resolutions where we actually say it, or I've looked at old ones where it says this is without a term. Do we need to state this is without a term? Or we we just let it go? We just don't?
Well, I think since it says in it's something like it shall terminate upon, and then it says when it shall terminate, these clearly implied that it doesn't terminate unless those things happen.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, any other changes on that? Okay, we have a motion on this?
I move to approve this resolution as edited.
Fair enough. Is there a second on the, and an original second, not an edit second? There's second?
I second.
All right, so let's take a vote on that, please. Greta?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, Robin?
Yes.
And myself. Okay, we are all on that. All right. The next is the the next app, the next proposed, the next draft resolution, if the board wants to take it up, is on the Walton Avenue. I think we had talked about trying to get that. Um, have you all got a copy of that?
Yeah, I, I, when I was, yeah, when I was reading this, I have a lot of comments, questions, et cetera, but a lot of them have to do with the whole issue of what is it?
Right. So let me, Robin, let me, let me just give you my quick comments because I typed them so I can throw them on a table for you. If you take number one, it says the premises uniquely. It's not bordered, so I put bounded by roadways on all sides. And then I put, and it's sole residence located on was effectively and visually an island without any adjacent neighbors and is a nonconforming residential property. Look at the word legal, Robin, if I'm what I knew you were going to say. And then it goes. I took out the next sentence further, its unique location and size, because we said already.
I'm sorry, you're going pretty fast. I'm not sure if I can follow with you. I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll let me real quick because that was it. But if you take number one, it starts, the premises is uniquely.
As in the first whereas clause?
Okay, we're past the whereas of the words in number one. I did. Sorry, did you say what you were going to say then?
Yes, yes.
Now I'm ready to follow on.
Yeah, if I was more skilled, I would put it on a screen, but I can't. The premises is uniquely bounded by roadways on all sides. And is the sole residence located on what is effectively and visually an island without any adjacent neighbors? And is a nonconforming residential property, period. And then it goes, I got rid of the next sentence because I thought it was redundant. And I went to accordingly requested area of answers will not result in. And that was, that was my only thing on that.
Okay, I had lots of actual going through. So my overall one is, is as I said, what is it? But if we go to start from the very top, we have the, within the existing single family house on the premises, there's no definition of the premises. So we need to somewhere put that five thirty three Walton Avenue is the.
Where are you? I'm sorry. Give me, give me just one second.
Whereas clause. First, whereas clause.
Oh, yeah. In the, in the heading, it says five thirty three Walton. And then it says tax ID. Um, should we? I would assume then that it's just that lot. Should we describe that in the body of the?
Could define it in either the body or in the, yeah, I mean, it says premises, but it's gets, I don't know, it's.
Yes, because I, I think later it starts to describe the premises as being something more than I consider the premises to be.
Problem. Okay, well, that is, but I guess, then you should then, I think you should start maybe Robin with the premises, as you indicated you were part of. And then later on, you could say the premises plus, if you're going to do that, right? At least have, have your core, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, do we all agree that the premises is just that lot that where we? That is the premises.
Yes, because otherwise they wouldn't be needing the variances, right?
Right. Okay, then you go into the table and I was confused by something. And this doesn't seem to match with what we were looking at today. But it says side yard, existing one point two five feet, proposed one point two five feet. So if it's, it it really doesn't make it, so it looks like there's no change. It doesn't make it clear that this is a new place in the place where this landing is, it is not one point two five feet. Otherwise, we don't need a variance.
I thought that was, it was an extension of building in the nonconforming yard.
So that's what I thought, but this doesn't seem to say that.
Right. But how did we describe that in the past when we say that it's a, it's adding to the the nonconformity in that sense, not that.
He had something in the, in the, when he had the, and I've now closed it. So let me see if I can get it again. He had something in the, the way it was in his application was clearer. So let me see if we can find, I can find it in the application where he, we had the in his letter, in his letter that he submitted. If I can find his letter, the new letter that he submitted on twelve twenty eight. Memo, the memo to the zoning board, that one. So he said. He said on it. It says an area, so there he says an area variance of thirteen point seventy five feet is required. So again, this is where I was, came up with my, was very confused on what this is. If he needs thirteen point seventy five feet, then is it new? Is it not new? What's the increase here? Where's the increase or what's not the increase? I'm not saying I'm not saying this, we can't do this. I'm just saying, I don't, it's not clear what he's getting and what they're doing. And I was confused.
All right. The other choice, Robin, is what if we don't refer to a particular?
I think we need to, we have to say what variances we're giving him.
Yeah, no, you're right. You're right.
How do you describe it? We did that just for the garage.
I think we said. I think we said something like an increase in the, a decrease in the. Whereas there's something like there's an existing noncompliance of, I'm making up a number, three feet. And you know, the existing noncompliant yard is three feet and he is increasing the existing noncompliance by one foot or something like that. We have to say something like that, but I don't know what the existing condition is over here. Because if you look at the chart, it's the same thing. So let me look at the site plan.
Yeah, there's a little problem, though. I'm seeing two differences in the site plans.
Yeah, so it's, it's.
Yeah, on the, on the stairways that come down. Oh, he turned the stairways. Oh, yeah.
Is it the survey that I was looking at and I'm trying, oh, there's the site plan. Is it?
Do you have, Robin? I noticed a difference. I have one on the screen and one on my hand. And they're not.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, I'm looking online.
So what's the date on this one? Drawn?
Okay, so now we hear, that's the site, that's the survey.
Which one do you have? Like, take a look at the, because I'm seeing, you know, that sixty seven point five five number that's on there? It's on the, if you go towards styles. There's, it says side yard.
Yeah, sixty seven point five five.
Now, if you take a look at that sixty seven point five, I have two surveys, one site, one. And one of them has the steps on it and one has them avoiding it.
Right. Well, I think this is the exist, the existing condition is what's on the survey. The one that says survey is the existing condition. So the existing condition is more of a problem because it has no side yard and the proposed site plan, they're turning it to avoid is what it looks like to me.
Oh, so right, the survey is, oh, I see. So they're going to turn it. They're turning it.
So.
Making it less, right?
Right, because it's dated January eleventh, twenty twenty one. So.
Those stairs, were there only three stairs within the lot that it could be considered a projection then? So it didn't, wasn't.
No, he turned it. He turned it on the.
I understand, but the one that was there before.
It was like one step on the, it looked like one step crossed over.
It's only one or two, up to three steps, it's considered a projection. So that's why it didn't create. You wouldn't consider that as an encroachment in the yard because that's permitted as a.
He's got one, two, three, four, five steps.
In the, in the old version?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay. In the old version, there's five within the lot or does some of it go past?
Only a little piece of one, Robin, on the one I'm looking at.
Right, but, but there's five steps altogether.
Yes, yes, yes.
Of which, all five of them, all or a portion of all five is, is within the boundaries of the property.
Yes.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then, but the new site one is better. It's, it's more.
Turns it. So if the old, but I don't, but this is where I'm saying, if the old site one is existing and whatever it is, however, it's legal, noncompliant or not legal, noncompliant, the noncompliant condition is what it is. He's improving the noncompliant condition. He shouldn't need a variant. We don't, we don't usually require a variance for that.
Okay, but he did need it for the additional coverage for the stairs and for encroaching on the front yard.
Correct. I'm, yes, yes. Side yard. So again, that's where I was looking. It was looking at this table that trying to correct to, to make all these consistent. That's where I was getting, I was quite confused.
If you're going to rebuild and you're improving, but it's still in, it's still requiring a variance in a sense because yes, you re, you're redoing your property. You're, it's less extreme than what it was, but it's new. And it still is in that yard. Wouldn't you need a variance for it, even though?
We have not in the past, I'm sorry, Meg, will you finish?
Well, it's just, I, I feel like they're extending it. So you could say it's much better, but it's also longer, you know, along that boundary line. So it, it seems like a different variance.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Right. And maybe that's how we have to explain it. But I think we have to explain it. Because as you look on this chart, it looks like there's no difference. So I think we.
Except for the word house.
What it is.
So he's got existing, he says one, two, five from the house. So wait a second, he's saying the one, I'm trying to find out where he's referring to by that. The one, two, five on the house.
Right. The house is, if you look at the site plan, the corner of the house that's closest to the stairs.
Yeah.
Is probably the very corner there is one point two five feet from the side yard when he builds this new.
I'll tell you why, Rob.
I'm trying to expand. I'm trying to enlarge my site plan as big as I.
Yeah. But Robin, if you take a look up where you have the garage under one story. That is the one point two.
Oh, right.
Right? So it's, I don't get it. I don't know what it doing here. It's like, I guess you're saying that's as is. And the other one is that. So I don't know. I think you're right. I don't know what he needs. I mean, it's one point two five.
I think Meg is right that to the extent that he is put in the old, under the survey, he has, let's say, I don't know how wide is the stairs, five feet is the width of a stair. I don't know what this width is.
I don't know.
Let's say, I'm going to make up a number. It may or may not be right. Four or five feet is the width of the stairs. So for four or five feet, for a piece of four or five feet, it violates the, it is within the, the required side yard. So for four or five feet, for a piece of four or five feet, it violates the, it is within the, the required side yard. Even if for the whole stairs, now he's turning the sides and he's got the landing, both of which are in the required. No, they're in the front yard, there's no increase in the side yard.
No, there's no increase, there's, he's staying with that one, the closest one is totally cornered.
No, 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 he's not, that's not the issue, and he's putting the stair landing and the stairs are. Are going into both the side yard and the front yard, and to the extent they're in the side yard. He is putting new, before you had, let's say, X, let's say I'm gonna again make up some numbers. Let's say he had three percent of the property in that side yard, now he's got six percent of the property in the side yard. So he is increasing, and we have dealt with this before, and that's how we treated it many times. That he's increasing, so I think we need to, rather than do this chart, because the chart doesn't, doesn't. It's too complicated to do it.
Doesn't lend itself to do, to do this.
I'm with you, I think, I felt the same, because it's confusing, and I think in this, you could just go. Can we just attach the plan?
I don't think that helps either, I think what we should say is something like, lot coverage is very clear. With lot coverage, he's increasing lot coverage, no question, I think we should describe it, right? So, the side, lot coverage, thirty-five percent required, he's the existing and he is increasing it, that's easy and that's clear. Then we get to the front yard, so right now, the existing condition is that. The existing house extends six point, that the, the existing front yard is only six point two feet from. If the existing yard is six point two feet and the proposed is twelve point seven, sounds like the new one is a decrease. Again, that's where my guy was confused.
In the front yard?
Yeah, look at the chart again, but it's not exactly what he's doing because that whole stair is in. He, he's, this chart says that the existing is a six point two foot front yard.
But, but because one.
Where, where's the six two, I'm trying to find. There it is, no, no, I found it, wait a minute, Robin.
But because, let's say.
Ninety-five, it's right above the number one twenty-six ninety-five on the survey.
So let's say he had gotten, I'm not sure what the history was, but he had gotten variances.
There it is, Robin.
The front yard, so he had got. I'm sorry, he had shown this house.
Hold up one second, so we can just, we don't have to go backwards that way, we'll go right to your next. But if you take a look, you see the six point two on the front yard line, you see where it says yard line on the.
Oh, I see the six point two, yeah.
There you go, that's it, so now that's six two, and it's going, proposed is twelve point seven?
Oh, because it's a completely different place, it's unrelated, the existing. Again, it's the same issue, the existing is wrong, the existing at this point is significantly more than. Going to the existing at this point is, he doesn't have the dimension, but it's significantly more. So he just doesn't have the dimension.
Point it is, but that doesn't give him license to build anywhere at six point two five.
Exactly.
Building into it, he needed a variance to do these stairs.
Right, but it's got, it's not worded, this is not worded at all.
Right, so we should just word it correctly and not try to figure out how the chart.
Yeah, Charlie, you following us?
Yeah, what I would suggest is, let's go through all your comments, I'll revise the resolution for the next meeting. So that you don't take a vote on something that everyone isn't entirely clear on.
Okay, then I will continue going on with my comments. The last were as clause on the page says, whereas the premises is islanded, X not, I don't know what that means. So whereas the premises is an island of land bounded by, or just is bounded by. But not islanded, the last were as clause on the first page, it says whereas the premises is islanded. I don't like the, I mean, there's no, I don't think it's a verb to island.
Roseways.
Right, surrounded by the following streets. Okay, then the next one, whereas the premises is completely, again, the same thing, surrounded by streets. I don't know why we're using the word roadways here when roadways isn't a term that we normally use. And it's not directly adjacent to, and it's not that it's not directly adjacent to neighbors. It's not that, it's, it's not adjacent because we're talking about a piece of property to any other properties.
Yes. No, you're actually right, that's much better, it's, it's surrounded by this and is not adjacent to other properties.
Correct, that's the issue.
Has it a bus road, and a bus roads all around it, no, that's, that's very good, I like that upfront.
Okay, now with the next one, the village of Mamaroneck determined, no. Whereas the village of, I don't know what that means, has determined, I assume it means, whereas the village of Mamaroneck code specifies the applicable. I don't know what has.
Don't you have an option play on that, under the code?
Well, maybe that, then it's not the village of Mamaroneck, then he's determined.
Let me just.
Applicant.
Well, then just say pursuant to the code, the front line is.
Right, but it's not that the village of Mamaroneck has determined either, it's a code requirement.
So if I just explain myself there to make sure, what we're doing. I believe in between the last meeting and this meeting, the applicant did go to the building department and they rectify. And I thought determined what the applicant chose to be the applicable side yards and front yards pursuant to the code.
Right, the applicant decided, it's not the village that tells.
Do you really need that line there? That whereas line?
Well, since it's, I think it's a corner lot, somebody has to have determined. We need to know.
Whereas, whereas, just say whereas the, well.
The applicant has, has, has indicated that, or has, it's the applicant makes that decision, subject to the code. And whereas in accordance with the village of Mamaroneck code, the applicant has determined that the front yard is blank.
He is supposed to, he is supposed to file that with the village, when he.
No, Charlie said he did file that with the village.
Oh, you could say, as the applicant filed with the village.
Okay, somewhere we need to say, because, much earlier than this, but this is where it occurred to me. We need to say there is an existing house on the premises that is being altered, because we never say that. We never say the premises include, you know, there is an existing house, and we need to make an absolute statement, there is an existing house. And he's renovated, and he is altering it. Okay, then. Then the, then the one that begins whereas a fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has been constructed, which has increased the size, I don't understand, which has increased the size of the requested area variances. It doesn't increase the size, the variances are the variances based on what's included, so I don't know what they're increased from, I didn't understand.
I don't know what's, what's the point of this paragraph?
Right, I don't either.
I, I thought you could say, I don't know what the fence has to do with it. You could say, you could make mention of the fact that there is land around the lot that increase, acts as a buffer. To minimize the, the impact of the encroachment in the yards.
Well, I think, to me, what he was doing here, but what it looks like this is, if you recall when we had that. Just last year, towards the end of last year, we had the property owner whose property abutted the Metro North. Train lot, and he'd fenced in and was using a portion of the Metro North. And we specifically said in our resolution that we were, that the area variances that we were approving. Was based on the actual lot size and not the property within the fence. So to these, I thought that might have been.
Good point, that's a good point.
Which was being intended here, in which case it needs to say something more like that. Whereas the variances are based on the actual site, boundaries of the lot. And not on the fence, which includes property that is not within.
Say on, on the survey of the lot.
Or the site or something like that, yeah.
I thought they were drawing attention to the fact that the very small, the encroachment in the very small front yard is. Influenced for neighbors or people driving by or the visual. By the fact that there is a buffer of land around it. I, I think that that is part of my opinion. If it, there was a neighboring lot and they wanted to get that close, I would feel completely, even on the street. It would be so much different than other homes that it was one and a half inches, you know, one point five feet from the street. I would think that that doesn't look right, but because there's a buffer of land, it doesn't stick out in the neighborhood. So to me, I think calling out the fact that there is land that the applicant doesn't own, but which buffers the lot. Does have for me an impact on the aesthetics and.
I have no problem with that, but I don't want to see that where he says he doesn't own, because I don't want to give the ownership, okay, which is.
I think it's two points, one, whereas he's fenced in more than he, more than he owns. And area variance is based on what he owns, and two, the fact that there is all this additional property allows for the buffering. Which reduces the visual impact of the house.
I'm with you, Robin, except for one thing, the word own, I would say outside of the surveyed property.
Okay.
You know what I mean, I don't know if he owns it or not, I think, to me.
Because he just told us that he tried to purchase it and he was.
I understand, he said, yeah, maybe he owns it already, maybe he's acquired, I'm not.
Acquire, adverse possession against the government, David, you know you can't do that.
But you could have got a prescriptive easement against them.
Right, but you still don't own it.
Anyway, I still think, in my mind, my opinion, you know, my, my granting of this resolution. Part of it is because there is a buffer of land around it, then.
I think that we all agree, that should be mentioned, that's fine.
Yeah.
It's an island, and it, you know where you mentioned that to make it easy, maybe Charlie, will you, will you say that it's an island? Not adjacent and contains a buffer.
Yes, except I'm gonna stay away from the word island, I think.
Well, yeah.
You're right, because you described it effectively, all right.
Okay.
I don't think so, I'm sorry.
The, when I.
Charlie, is this a problem?
When we issued TO, I wanted to state that there's surveys in play. Okay, so everything inside that buffer is gonna be mentioned on their, their CC or CO for the property at the end.
Okay, my next comment is on the next, is on the next were as clause. Due to the unique shape and location of the premises, the, 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 the single family house is a pre-existing nonconforming structure. The, the house is not a single forming, non, legal, nonconforming structure due to the shape and location of the premises. It's a non, it's nonconforming in assuming, because it doesn't comply with the code. That's why it's nonconforming.
I, I, I agree with you, I would take that, and then I wouldn't all call it legal noncompli, it's noncompli, we don't have to go.
We don't know if it's legal, that's.
We don't need to go there, that's, it's an issue, so I, you wanna, whereas due to the unique shape.
We could take it out.
I think you can take the whole paragraph out.
You think so too?
Charlie?
Gone.
Okay. Then I, this, I had, I think, because I had the same comments on number one that David did more or less, but it doesn't matter. Then on the conditions, we normally have conditions about how they can't, there can't be any changes. To the plan, except a minimus that don't affect the substances of the variance, he's gotta get his building permit. Within a certain amount of time.
Try it to a site plan?
You know, that's what I'm saying, he's gotta comply with, with the, the site plan as submitted today, so we need to add that condition, it's in almost all of our other. It should be in every other variant, something like that, Charlie should be able to find it.
Yep. Okay.
That's it, there's not much left.
Sporting, Greta, Meg?
Covered everything I was thinking about, so thank you, Robin, that was very thorough.
Thank you, Robin, will you wanna waste the next month on this?
Yeah, I'll revise.
There's an interesting thing, I've mentioned, Charlie and I have discussed it once, and. I actually, we experienced it in my office recently, and that's where there are municipalities that have filed a vote. We approve, we don't approve, and that's it. And the law says you're supposed to file the whole decision, right, showing your findings. And we had a case where after we represented the homeowners, after the article seventy-eight was commenced. After it, and after they put papers in, the board then issued a decision. And I said, ah, well, that's a little late in the game, and the courts, particularly in the second department. Remember at point, remember Charlie, we discussed this, and they said, they said, oh, well, that's helps us, that's good, because now we don't have to remand that we have it. Which, I'm a little floored by that, I still find it to be a very lack of logic, and it's, it's almost a way you can be noncompliant to compliant. So there are some boards now that have started to just go, they take a vote and then they write the reasoning into it, but I don't think we should do that. That's fine, so you wanna wait till next month, everybody, on this one?
Yes.
Okay, I agree, that's.
May I ask a quick question for eight oh five Mamaroneck, the draft resolution with the edits, will that be reviewed at the next meeting as well? Or once those edits are done, will that be able to get signed and processed?
I, I think eight oh five, we had minor changes, right?
Yeah, we had minor changes, they were very minor.
Okay, so it won't have to go to the next meeting in February?
No, we, and we actually voted on it, we.
We voted on it, right, right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a host of some additional matters, so we can try to get out of here in half an hour. I assume we're not gonna deliberate, we could wait for the others for next month. I mean, we have, we have other things to deal, I know, may put a lot of time, and we have inputs as lead agencies.
I have some questions, Meg, on, on, on the, your two comments.
Okay, so.
Wait, let me first, are we gonna, David, you wanna turn that and make that?
Yeah, so I think, let's go to that now, so there are two, there are two issues that we've been advised. As a lead agency, part of our responsibility is that if we have input, we should provide it to the lead agency. And Meg has, we discussed it a bit.
Proposed, you know, definitely.
These are proposals, these are not either.
I have a real, a question first, which is, did we get, did we see?
I lost you, Robin, are you there? Is anyone else moving?
Yeah, she froze.
Somebody, so, everybody raise your right hand. All right, we got you, all right, you're, you're good. What are your swing, are you in the? Boss Robin, we, we didn't lose me.
Yeah.
All right, Robin, you were frozen for a while, you feel better now?
Okay, so let me say that again, I, I read all these and I thought, we, did we see the application? Because these are so detailed, we couldn't know these without seeing the application, so did we see the application? I don't recall ever seeing the application, I was very.
Okay, definitely seven fifteen Mamaroneck Avenue, it did come to us, and we saw that it needed more variances. We were all a part, and we had a preliminary review of seven fifteen Mamaroneck Avenue. For Van Brans, once it was announced that it was a lead agency, so I went and looked at the application that was filed with the planning board.
Okay, I don't think we can make any comments that we all, that the, the board as a whole should not be. As much as these may be the perfect comments, I don't see how we can make comments on an application that we haven't seen.
We have seen the seven fifteen Mamaroneck.
Okay, so that may be right, and I'm, okay, but I don't see how we can make any comments on five seventy-two when we haven't seen. And by the way, I went to the planning board after I got your comments and I didn't see the application, so I don't know whatever happened to them, but they weren't.
Right, because it was the month before, and it didn't.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
Very next month.
So anyway, but, well, once I had your comments, I wanted to look and see. And so I, I would be, I would not vote, could not vote for sending a document for an applicant with all these comments on something that we haven't seen. No matter how appropriate they are.
Let's start, let's start with the first one then, with seven fifteen Mamaroneck Avenue. As our comments, these are simply informal comments, they're not bounding on anybody. I suppose we can do it by resolution, but sometimes where you can, but is any, have any problems with the seven fifteen Mamaroneck Avenue?
Okay, a couple things. No, no, all of those comments are fine, it was the, it was the, it was the stuff at the bottom, the ZBA wants to inform the planning board. I don't know if the signed and stamped survey is part of the requirement, the, I, I don't know, if it's the planning board application. I don't know if at this point in the process, the planning board requires a signed and stamped survey, if it doesn't, then I don't know if this comment is appropriate. Certainly we do, but.
So how about this, instead of saying?
But I'm, I'm not saying it is required, I'm just pointing out that it is.
Okay.
So this is fine, sir, it's not supposed to be a absolute fact, we're, we're sending concerns, not, not decisions.
That's fine, okay, and now it says, the application does not list the need to comply with the multiple dwellings law. I'm not sure that the application needs to, an application doesn't list all the laws they have to comply with.
Maybe it doesn't, I'm informing, I would like to just present that to the planning board to consider.
So I would not like to.
Not, I am not stating it has to, I am stating the fact that it did not refer.
All right, I think that Rob, Robin's point is that there's an implicit indication when you're saying that. That you're saying it because it should, but I understand your point, like, you're saying, hey, I just. Maybe what you wanna say is that.
Whether it needs to comply with.
Or that the board knows that the following items, which are not included, may be helpful and or necessary.
Except to the. Except that the, the planning board, whether or not it has to comply with the multiple dwelling law, isn't something that the planning board reviews. Similarly, similarly, whether or not it needs a, any kind of a permit from the Department of Health, because it's doing certain other things. We don't say anything about that.
Okay.
Whether or not it complies with all kinds of other laws. Every application doesn't just need to comply with the village code, but it has to comply with numerous laws. And I do not see why we would say, note it has to comply. You wouldn't say that in an application. An application to the planning board, you don't list all the laws. You have to comply with.
But I think. Hold on, hold on, everybody.
All the laws you have to comply with. So I don't know why we're calling out the IDL.
Slow down, everybody. Bring it down. Thank you. Okay.
But Charlie sent us a memo. In regards to, about multiple dwellings law, right Charlie? In which you said that the ZBA. Is the board that would hear variances. So it is a concern of the, it is something. Point of view of the, the ZBA that, uh, to take into consideration multiple dwellings law. And I thought that you had made the finding that seven fifteen Amerenick Avenue did need to comply with multiple dwellings law. I thought that was a memo, Charlie. Am I wrong?
So the village did adopt the multiple portions of the New York State Multiple Dwellings Law. So to the extent they have to comply with that, that's a determination the building department needs to make because it is very technical. It has to do with things from plumbing to construction. To the extent they need variances, they then would have to come before the zoning board of appeals. And we should remember that the planning board is doing a lead agency review of all permits and actions that are required for the entire project.
I understand, but, but, but one of the things of like maybe find a common ground here is that. Our job is not to tell them what they have to do. Our function is to say, in doing your assessment, from an environmental standpoint. We think you should take into account and be apprised of the following. It doesn't mean it's required or aren't required. It means you ought to make sure somehow these things are reviewed and considered by you in making an assessment. That's the point of this, Meg. It's not to tell them how to run their show and what their jurisdiction.
I'm happy rephrasing it.
No, I'm not. I'm not criticizing it.
You say, does not address the potential, um, applicability of the multi-dwelling law?
Well.
Saying it doesn't, instead of saying it doesn't, how about we simply say, ZBA would like to note that the planning board. That, that a proper assessment of the impact of this should may, may consider, it should involve the consideration of matters. That include the following.
Okay.
Instead of saying what they didn't do, say the following, okay? That, uh, flood zone variance and the DOS should be included, is not included. You know, that was then I think flows as opposed to saying that they didn't do something, Charlie. It's saying, listen, you got to take these into consideration.
Okay.
Because I think.
That's all was my intent. I'm sorry.
I, I understand that. I think Robin's right in the sense that when it says, does not judicial, did not do this. You know, imagine if we got that, we kind of go, hey, thank you. We need your helpful call. Our, our, our role is, I understand it, Charlie, is to simply say, as an involved agency, we're just surprising you that these may be, these are factors we think should be considered. I mean, you know, you may decide, and it's not limited to their jurisdiction. It's limited to their assessment of it. So I think, but I think you're right on the breadth of it, Meg. I just think that it's not a matter of, does it, does not list the need for a floodplain? Okay, so, so the, the, so instead of that, for example, the application does not list the need for floodplain development. The applicant, a floodplain development should be considered for this application. You know, that, that's something like that. My, my, does that make sense in my, in my office or?
No, I think that's better. And maybe, maybe for that floodplain variance, flood zone variance is different because we, if we know specifically. That it needs a floodzone variance, that's different than something else that we want to make sure they consider.
That's good.
If we know they need a floodzone variance, and I don't know if they do, but if we knew they needed it, then I think this way is appropriate to say. If we don't know they need it, we just have to make sure.
Point it out and say, you guys should consider this.
It has to be the way that, that David suggested.
Yeah, I, I, you're right. If, if it's something we know, say, you know, you have to determine whether or not you need a variance unless on this, so. That's got to be in there. And the other ones are, you should be aware of this.
Right.
And deal with it. And consideration of these factors. Maybe that's it. It's really a matter of. I think if, remember the regs used to say that the agencies all have a duty to notify the others of things that they think should be considered and, of impacts. So it's a matter of, and I think they're all listed here. I mean, they're good, but I do think that, and I know, I know you've explained to Meg, it makes sense. But when you say, they did not, they did not do this, the implication is, you know, you screwed up. And the answer is, no, just make sure you consider these items. And maybe there were some.
I had no way of saying the planning board's, they just got the application. I was just.
I don't know. Well, I, I, I have to be honest. I think this is wonderful that we're taking the time to go through something. Cause that I think is our role and the role of all agencies. And I'm not sure how many do it. And I, I think you put a lot of effort into this. And we tweak it, work on it, and we'll be other.
And, and I understand, Robin, that we didn't as a board have the applicant come to us with five seventy-two Van Brans. But when, as a lead agency, says what are your, you know, as it says, other boards can address concerns. What else do you do except go and look at the application? And I understand you didn't find it. Um, I did read the application and so.
Did you read the application on five seventy-two?
I did. I spent quite a bit of time going through.
I, I'm sorry, but we're, you're asking us to say these things for an application that only you reviewed. And I am not trying to impugn you or otherwise, but, um. This may not, we may not agree that.
I kept saying that I wanted to, you know, do this. I'm sorry that other people have not looked at those.
How about the following?
As I said, I tried to, but it wasn't.
How about we say something like this? How about on, on the Van Rans? Simply indicate that the applicant, what, what did we receive on that? I don't have it for me.
Nothing but the NOI.
Okay, fine. So all we received is this, as a result of which one of the members of the board. Uh, arranged, reviewed the thing, right? And has the following comments that we passed on here. Then I think that's accurate. And then, and you know, we're saying it and we're giving you, we're giving you the, the backing of, if you will.
That's fine. I, I, I had.
Does that make sense to you?
Something like this. I had no idea how to start to, you know, the comments and, you know, how to list themself.
Um, I do have one more comment on the prior one. And I did, because I didn't understand it. It says, the application does not call out the need for a variance regarding open air space per apartment. I'm not sure what you mean by open air space per apartment.
In the code, when you have a multi-residential building, depending on how many apartments, you need enough, a certain amount of square footage. And it's described in the code. I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. Then you have to have open to the sky. Space for the use of all tenants.
Right.
How much square footage of that you need? So do you want me to have more code?
I think this, the way it's written is a little unclear, because that's not exactly what the code says. The code talks about it as open space and, um, I know now, now that I understand.
Says open to the sky. So I could, I could go back and call out the code, you know, cite the code and the code term there instead of the words I have there.
Sorry, I'm trying to find it now to get the exact language if I can. I don't know what I can. I ended, I think I understand what you're trying to say, but, um, let me see if I can find it. Just hang on one second. Because assuming this is what you mean, and that's all, I just want to make sure. Where's the residential district? Anyways. Yeah, I can't find the code when you go back.
I think if you look at multi-residential, I think it's in the, the new section for multi-residential.
Yes, I'm trying to look at and that's what I couldn't.
What's the section we're looking at?
That's what we don't have, the section number.
Oh, but what's the, what's this, what's the words? Give me some words.
Open to the sky.
Is it in the TOD, Meg, or is it in the multiple residential?
Usable opens, open to the sky. Sitting on that, open to the sky, three forty.
What's the, where are you reading that?
I don't know, it's the whole thing. I'm just, three forty-eight.
You mean three forty?
Three forty-two, three B, usable open space.
Wait, what section, Dave?
Three forty-two. Um. Hold on one second. Three forty-two, three hyphen three B as in boy. That says a hundred?
Wait, three forty-two B? There is no three forty.
Three B, three B. I, I, I'm reading what it showed up as, but now I'm going into it. So it looks like it's a definitional. Yeah, it's called terms defined. It's, I don't know why it's, it's, it's three forty-two, three. And then it's under B. Oh, B, because B is the definitional sections. Okay.
Yeah, it's under the defined terms, usable open.
There you go. Use, exactly. There you go. Thank you. Good.
Right, but that's not, that's, that's not, that's, that's, that doesn't answer.
It does, on any block containing more than fifteen dwelling units, probably sub to ten percent of the open space requirements.
Yeah. If this doesn't answer.
I think it's in the TOD. I think it was in the TOD.
Yeah, I think you might, that, that could be where it is. I vaguely recall at one point seeing something like that.
Okay, well, I can look at.
Three forty-two attachment to schedule of minimum requirement for residential districts. District, the amount of usable space shall be determined by blank.
Yeah, but there's, there's, anyway, I, I, I can go back and get.
And models.
Everybody else looking for the specific. I thought it was per apartment and I thought we'd actually, that had.
Take a look at the, oh, resident, here we go. Three forty-two fifty? Yeah, that's what you're looking for. I think three forty-two fifty.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's maybe. Open space, three hundred feet, square, where feet per unit? It's on a table under three forty-two dash fifty. Residents uses in commercial districts and transit and TOD.
Open space requirement, three hundred feet per market rate unit, one hundred feet. That doesn't say usable open space. That just says open space requirement. It's not the same thing. See, this is why.
I can change, take that usable and I can cite the code so they understand.
Yeah, but you know, the funny thing is, Robin, and you're right, except who knows? They sometimes you change the definitional use, right?
We know that. We don't know whether, but the point is, I don't know whether it was the same thing intended, what it means.
Usable, so the, the phrase we had before was usable, right?
And this just says open space. And so, um. Usable does not mean open space. For example.
Quotation marks, it should work. Alright.
And also, we are asking them to consider this. We're not, we're not.
Yeah, that's right.
But we have to make sure there's no, the way you wrote it is just. Not, there's no open air space per apartment, because the way it's written implies that, um, the, that it's a per apartment open airspace. So to the extent that they have to consider whether or not, wouldn't it, isn't it just sufficient to say, um, was their consideration of the amount of open space? As required by the code, something as simple as that.
What, what, Robin, you're going to get a kick out of this. Wait, I gotta tell you guys that. I just, we have the definition of usable open space, right? Then you put that phrase in quotes, define where they use it. And you know what they, where they use it?
In the definition.
Zipper, only in the definition. So you define a phrase for the use of the code.
And you never use anywhere.
Never use the code. Instead, just, and that's when you get confused. Does that mean open space? Does that mean this? There you go though.
Okay, if I go to, if you go to three forty-two fifty. E, the letter E. Seven.
Has a usable open space requirement. Yes.
One hundred and fifty square feet per unit.
Right. So if you want to say, then what you should say here is, um, um. It's not, again, it's not, the board does not call out the need for a variance. We don't know if they need. The question is, um, they should consider whether or not they've satisfied the requirement for usable open space. Period. And that would cover.
I got it. Okay, but that's the same thing with all the others, but it is usable open space and it is per, per unit. I said, I said apartment instead of unit, but it is usable open space per.
Well, it's nice, with the amount is per unit, but it's not like each unit has to have a hundred and fifty square feet.
No, I'm, but I'm just bringing their attention to.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's.
Because of the importance of, of the whole concept. Charlie, I have a question. If, if this is an expression just of the board's input, it's, it's, it's not a binding input. It's an agency input, right? Is it something we vote on or is that something we simply say the board deliberated, discussed the issues? And wants to bring this to your attention. Let's say like, Mike writes a letter or that type or something. What, what do you think about that? Or do we really have to do a formal resolution? I would think you don't, but what do you, what's your input on that?
You don't need a formal resolution. It would be stronger if the court of justice has the consensus of a majority of the board.
Okay, that makes sense. I, I think that's a very good, that's a very good position. I agree with it. I think that, so the only issue is, because I don't want this thing to just take over and be a life unto itself. So either we all say, or either you have a thing saying the board discussed it and this represents the consensus of the board's input. That wouldn't need a resolution, would it?
No.
Okay. I mean, I, 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 listen, that was everyone wants to do, but I think that starting with resolutions just becomes a whole new. To me, this is a lot easier to simply say.
Yeah, I thought it would just be like a memo that.
Right.
Say this was, the board discussed this and the following is the consensus of the board's opinions, you know, a combination of whatever.
It's not even a consensus. The, the board agreed to.
Right, the board, the board is providing you.
These topics are the point of interest to you for your consideration.
Maybe what you can get is the section that provides us, in the regs, there's a section that requires input on this.
Do you want me to attempt to rewrite this or is Charlie going to do it or what should we do?
Why don't you do it? I mean, I, I think, what do you think, Charlie?
I. I'm about to. Pleasure, whatever you guys would prefer.
Hey, what, you want to just, Meg, you've done this and you've been, I mean, I don't care, but I think maybe that would be good. Excuse me, I'm about to run out of juice. I gotta just plug this in. Um, I think that would be. A nice way of dealing with it. Maybe do it. I mean, I'm very pleased and I want to just commend everybody. And I mean, on the whole, and I think this is great, because we've. This is what it should be. This is where other boards should be involved in giving input. Charlie, it's actually, and you can give it a section of the reg, maybe there's a section that says, all agencies shall. Actually, we're supposed to.
Yeah, I'm looking it up right now.
We're also supposed to get a complete copy of everything filed. So the complete copies of the application should have been filed.
The application of the EBA, right, right.
Everything should have been filed. And just sending us an NOI with nothing is really useless.
Yeah, I know, but you know what?
This is the address that happened when I wasn't here and there was a switch and I think it was supposed to be sent. We found this out at planning. Um, Ashley did explain that. So it kind of got lost in limbo. I guess the NOI just got sent out by itself.
Look, as I see it, this is a step, a good, solid step in the right direction. And the fact that it wasn't done perfectly is of no consequence. What it means is, this is way more than I think. I've seen people notify us on, and us notify us. I, I think this is one, I like it. I think this is, I don't know. Charlie, do boards often do this in your background and your other?
Typically, boards don't. Typically, you get lead, uh, involved agency responses from state agency or counties, but.
Right, right, because they have a staff to do it. But we're an involved agency here.
Yeah, absolutely. And coordinated review, so you can send your comments.
And, and they don't have, you can, actually, if we ever disagreed on something, you could say, these represent, not all board members at every point, but I think it's great. I, I like it. I mean, I don't. So we got to.
Be careful to just simply say, these are topics for you to consider that the, that.
We'll give you the, we'll give you the language in the regs. It, 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 it is correctly noted in them. Um, it's actually the involved, agencies are supposed to assist. If you're involved and not wait until things, most of them give them input. And I think that's great. Okay, so you're going to do that up and you'll circulate that as well?
I'll circulate that, yes.
Super.
Um, how do we do that? Because it's not a public, it's okay for people to, to send comments back or something. We would, are we violating open meetings law? If we do this in email circular?
It's not a matter of a resolution or a thing like of an action, is it? Charlie, what?
You're discussing it in the open forum, so that's more than, more than appropriate.
No, but if, if I, if I circulate, um, a revised version and somebody wants to make comments on it, is, is that okay to do by email or?
The comments would be limited to some significance, not, not, I think this should be praised, but. I guess then you just circle, what do you think? Charlie, then if some, if someone says, no, that you missed it, you, you misstated on this, that's not a problem, is it? Or is it?
No, it's not. And practically speaking, there's really no other way to do it unless you're all in the same room.
Right, which we're not going to be. Okay, thank you. That was very good. I, I think that's great. Um. Two quick things, if I can, if anyone go about their life. Um. first off, um, we have one matter that I've discussed with Charlie and I'd like to bring up at the next meeting. And I think I'd like to get a legal input, maybe meet with counsel on it, then all of us. But I I'm concerned about something here and I, we've made, we have this FEIS that technically, and that that tech is legally our responsibility to do the FEIS. And we don't get any responses to the inquiries that they're supposed to provide us. I'm sure there's reasons for it. I'm not suggesting it's in bad faith. I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just suggesting factually, we haven't got. And I'm concerned about that and I'd like to meet with our engineer to understand some things here because on the, uh, on that project, the storage facility, we actually, because of the segmentation and the way it came up, we actually deal with the original building as well. And, you know, that, I'm just gonna be practical. I'm not an engineer. But whatever they built and they can tell me all the engineers in the world, how, oh, everything was great. Well, look what happened. And I'd asked, I mean, that, there was that, there was a big failure there. So you take your failures and you utilize those to avoid them in the future. You don't push them aside. To me, whatever was built there had a problem and, because look what happened. So how do you mitigate against it in the future, both there and in the new, in the new thing that they want to put up? And I think that I'd like to meet with an engineer about, because I I just, I just don't want this, oh, yeah, they've answered it. That means nothing to me. They haven't answered a thing and the, and sense of, there's no question and answer about what happened. I asked them at the last meeting. I said, well, what was the damage? It wasn't the last meeting, maybe two meetings ago. They haven't even told us. They'll fix it up. It'll be looking beautiful. So I've asked, uh, Charlie, did you speak to the building department about that? I wanted to see if there's permits for reconstruction.
Uh, now, I'll, I'll get the permits for.
I appreciate that. I hope there are some, yeah. I think that what we need to do is, we're gonna look like we're the lead agency that hasn't prepared the FEIS. So I think what we should do is plan and maybe meet or talk beforehand, like we can set this thing going with the engineering and Ashley. If, if, and give them, if you want, we can give them, let's say, a time period to respond to the questions that they've been posed with. I'd like it like eight or nine days before the meeting, so we get the hard copies before. And then we can discuss it at the meeting, because I I know we haven't done anything wrong, but when one looks back at this one day, and and Robin, I think you you've seen this a lot too, is you just, well, we didn't do it. We didn't do it. We have the responsibility. It's our FEIS to do. And all I know is, it's, it's in a stall, but not because of us. And so, fine, if they're not gonna give it to us, we can write an FEIS based on that too. It's, but I think it's a responsibility and I want to be fair to them and fair to everybody and fair to compliance. So I think maybe, Charlie, we can say, the next meeting is what, February the fourth, something?
February the third.
Third? Oh, I'll be here the long. So, so what's the time period? What's like the, that's a Thursday. So what's like the Thursday before January the? Someone do backwards counting here, three?
Uh, I'm looking at that calendar. It would be, a week before would be January twenty-seventh.
Okay, so that'll be a Thursday. So why don't we say, anything that they want to respond to, we'd like by January twenty-sixth, hard copies. Unless you don't want hard copies, I don't care. But I mean, and then we can, let's deal with it at the meeting. It take, we'll take a half an hour in a work session, and I think I'd like to go to a council session as well, because there are legal issues. I'd like to get some clarification on our responsibilities and options.
And you're saying that we're going to do it, we have this deadline for them to submit something and you want to work session, February third meeting?
Yes, because we've asked them in the past, as I understand.
Oh, I, I'm in complete agreement. I just wonder how much we can get done on February third. We have several, uh, of resolutions now to discuss.
Correct.
As well as this, so.
We'll keep it, we'll, we'll, we'll keep the.
Robin, you're on mute. I can see you're talking, you're on mute.
Give them a deadline?
What? That was great, Robin.
Did we give them a deadline? I don't, that's what I'm asking.
No, we will now, because they they were supposed to have, not only do is there a deadline, we have a deadline and when we were supposed to have prepared it.
I understand that.
And I don't want to be the party, we're gonna be the board that, we failed and, dear goodness, your honor, we've been waiting around and waiting around. I want to remember what they had to do. So I think we'll tell them now. If they intend to respond to any of the prior inquest, please provide it by January, whatever. These were simple things.
Oh, so then Charlie needs to write a letter from the board to them saying, please, please, we had.
Board would like any response.
At the meetings on blank and blank, we requested certain information from you that has not been provided. Please provide all that information, not later than blank, right?
Well, or, or I don't know if you have to recite all of them, on a requested information, please provide by blank date in hard copy, right? And then let's take it up then. And then I think, Charlie, you and I talked about the engineering aspect, because there's a concern, we should talk about it at council, but, um, okay. Um,
I think.
Think about one thing, if I could suggest one thing for the future, just to think about. Um, I did a lot of work before a couple of boards and they had an interesting approach. And I I'm not sure, I liked it, but it works two ways. I know that a lot of times we get something before us and there's a lot of in-depth that has to be done that, you know, maybe falls apart, maybe doesn't. And there were some boards, zoning and planning, where they would do it, I guess, the way sometimes judges will do it, they'll assign it to one person to do the deep background, like to really understand it. And that sort of becomes a person who's on the board, the quote-unquote expert for that application. Because I used to go out, the Hamptons do that, and East Hampton and Southampton do that. And you go out there and the minute you start getting questioned, you realize, okay, that's the person. It's like arguing an appeal. That's the judge who's got the cases, who's, it doesn't make anyone else not, but we sort of rotate them around and split them up so that everybody sort of gets a handle on checking the building department file, checking, checking this. It sort of lets us get ahead. It simplifies things, I think, and it brings it up. Think about it, because I I was thinking, it has some real nice advantages to it. Because a lot of the questions that we pose sometimes are, how is this? How have they done this? What is the building department record? And this way, somebody here gets involved and looks at everything and says, okay, the survey is no good, or whatever. Yeah, I don't mind doing so, but I think, think about.
I think that's a good idea, but I think if we're gonna do something of that, what we also need to do, and I, because I know this is done in places where for every application, two members of the board, on a five-member board, are appointed as the committee to go view the property.
Right.
And they go out so that you have two members, not just one member giving their opinion, you have two members, not more, so you don't have a quorum. And the two members go to each property. And if they need to make an appointment with the owner, because there's, they need to get to the back, and they do that. And that's something, you know, periodically, some members go, periodically don't. Some members just look around the outside. I know that's what I do. I just look at the outside, but sometimes you really need to get onto the property. And I think that would be really good if we had two members of the board.
I think that's a very excellent point, Robin. Thank you.
Application to go and view the site, a rotating, you know, everybody gets to do, you know, everybody has to do some. It's just part of the responsibility.
I think it's great. I I really do. I just think sometimes we get bottled up in, in questions and in comments and in thought processes and deliberations or at the hearings that we really, it's like, well, you know, if we had looked at it, if we had thought this through, and so, and it's a lot to do, all of them. And I think it would help build a correct record. And Charlie, if there's any problems with that, let me know. And Greta and Meg, let me know what you think. And maybe after the next meeting, I sort of like that idea. Because I'm fair to the applicant.
We had talked a while back about somebody, um, or two, or somebody going to the property. And, um, I think it's a terrific suggestion, because you really, you can't, you can't see every, everything. Yeah, I mean, usually you can't see much of anything, you know, because a lot of it is.
I agree. Listen, I wanted to say one thing, when when we brought up the Walton property, the fact that I know that property just makes me like, yeah, like, duh. Look at that and tell me, what does it comply with? I think it's not non-conforming. I think it, it's non-compliant. And I don't mean, you could pick a section, it doesn't. I mean, when I moved here, literally, I told you guys this. I literally went up to the owner one day and he was a former ball player at the, at the, I guess, to the Jets, I think, and it was, we were talking, because I was doing work with him and it was like, we were talking about things and I just said, man, how did you figure this one out? And he said, because it's, it's a very cool place, but it's like, it's, it's, you're, you're on an island. It's not an island technically. But so be it. All right, I'll give that some thought and bounce something around with everybody and and clear it to Charlie. And, um, good. And I said, we'll try to keep the hearings lighter, because I think we do our best work. And I I think the thing that, you know, Megan and I also discussed then afterwards today on the, the input, you know, I like that. I think it gives it, I think it accomplishes more, not just for the applicants, but for our mission, if you will. So anyway, any thoughts other than a motion to adjourn? Or you can push the button that says leave the meeting and that constitutes a motion and.
I think that ends it all for everyone.
There you go. And thank you. Listen, on the, on the applications, um, can we assign the numbers to them when they come in or something?
I asked that. I have been asking that for like over.
It's a real pain in the rear.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go back to that. I think it got nixed halfway through. Some had them, some didn't, so I think we'll have to. I'm gonna be away for a few days, so I think February might be a hard time to give another person to start that, so I might have to start that mid-February, if that's okay.
Also, what about secret categorization? Is that happening?
I just need to be advised on that. I don't always know them, so I would need the advisement of someone like Ashley to let me know that.
We'll get you the stuff.
And Gracie, can I ask you a village question? This is post-meeting. Um, because you very nicely looked for special permits when we asked, we were asking for Toyota, and sometimes it's hard for you to find them. And I know when it, it says that we, within sixty days, we're supposed to sign them and file them with a village clerk. Because I was sort of like, okay, well, where are they filed? There must be someplace.
Yeah.
And I wonder, why are they not?
I don't know about the old ones. Apparently, there was an off-site location, if I'm understanding, years ago. Uh, so two thousand and fifteen, when I was looking for those, were very hard to find. I do reach out to the clerk for that. Now I upload them on mine. I upload them to a program, Middacity, everybody can access it. Um, and the clerk does store them, but the old ones, it's hard to say.
Well, they're usually.
Especially special permits.
Yeah.
That's, that governs the operations and how it was for or not, when somebody else moves in or it's three years.
It was like those resolutions for the restaurants. Those were harder to come by than I thought they'd be. And unfortunately, my records don't go.
Somebody has, uh, uh, somebody in the village I know has Betty Ann's contact information. Has any, and and I know one of the problems after she left was nobody seemed to ever want to contact her in the village.
I talked to her before I started, actually. I've had many conversations.
Yes, so can you ask her, yes, but prior people have, have not been willing to do that, which is why we've been.
Is Ann Malavet around still?
I'm sorry?
Do you know Ann Malavet?
I don't know.
She was, she has Betty's predecessor. That's who I worked with years ago. She was, she was, the only thing happened with her was we once went till one thirty in the morning. And she said, that's it. Ten o'clock time, come, I'm out.
But Gracie, can you ask Betty Ann if she, where, she, she may have, I mean, she, what, we used to be able to ask Betty Ann if she could find you all those applications. So the question is, how did Betty Ann do that?
How did she track them down? Yeah.
Yes. And maybe you can ask her how she did it. Um, so.
I'll find out.
All right. And, uh, who's gonna second the motion that wasn't made?
I seconded it.
All right, so that's a motion and a second. We'll let you do both. I'll do the second for German. Thank you. You had a good trip. Happy New Year to everybody and and.
Everybody stay safe.
Pretend you're, you're doing all right, everybody? You're doing okay? Everybody here with their health and everything, because that's important, I gotta tell you.
Yes.
There's, this is wildfire out there. We all know, unfortunately. But I, it's been, uh, in my, I haven't been to the office. I go in twice a week, but I have to tell you, we used to joke about it. And it's like, I'm not gonna be in next week. I got, then this one's not gonna be, and I, what's going on? But it seems like, for most of us, it, it happens. I mean, I do take a test, but at least the vaccines, people are okay, but it's, it's just amazing how it is. And so.
Getting a lot of extra time with my kids.
That's right. Yeah, you've also had that, Charlie. That's true.
Lot, lot, lot of extra times.
Well, it's, it's, it's really changed things. I mean, when you talk about going places and going out or traveling, it's just really, and it's, it's, we've all become sort of homebodies, at least I have. Although I am gonna go skiing next week, so if I don't get my break of legs, I hope to. All right, everybody stay.
Everybody, thank you guys.
All right, good night.
All right.